Okay, well, everybody please stand to bow and pray.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of education and thank you for these leaders. Thank you for our teachers and thank you for our new year. As we prepare to start, may confidence be our foundation, may grace be our guide, and may hope be our compass toward a bright future. We pray that you will help us see the needs of those around us and give us hearts to be helpers. Please lead us to face each day with positivity, knowing that no matter what the challenge, we don't have to face it alone. Lord, we pray for your protection over us as we return to school. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coles.
Yes, sir.
We move on to, I have three public comments. Do you have any public comments?
No public comments.
No public comments, alright. Moving right along then. Moving to, I have four secret tenor reports from just kind of.
Yes, sir. First things in here, look indoors, this one is packed. We have three documents, two are color-coded tables and graphics, and one is a spreadsheet, if you will. And I want to just share with the board, we kind of bring them up to bring you guys up today, get your feedback on what the district has been utilizing, intends to utilize, as a guideline for determining the state of public health as it relates to COVID-19, so that we can use that information to inform our continued phasing plans for getting kids face-to-face into our buildings. As you know, staff have never left since March, and our teaching staff and campus staff returned two weeks ago, and will be teaching from their classrooms to start the year remotely. The decentral SD, every employee is essential and their role to be fulfilled needs to be done, a lot of work, and as it relates to teaching from their classroom, where their resources are, where their support is. And so, that's been well received by staff, and we're ready to go for Monday. That being said, the first item I want to share is San Antonio Metro Health's data dashboard. What we have learned very clearly is that the risk in schools matches the risk in the community. Where schools have started in face-to-face in other states or in other countries, in those states or countries where the community or the county was in good health as it related to COVID-19, their schools did well. If public health was in, you know, a very critical state of positivity rates, 15-day decline wasn't looking good, doubling time wasn't looking good, and all the indicators were suggesting that the trend for COVID-19 at that time was spiking. If schools opened during that time, then they had a tough time. So, really, if we monitor community health metrics and we use that guidance as kind of, how many, what kind of percentage of students can we have in our building, then we feel like with our risk mitigation protocols, we're going to be in really good shape. And so, this is yesterday's data dashboard, and we monitor daily. It's in San Antonio, it's in covid19.sanantonio.gov. And there are seven metrics that the metro health is monitoring. And when we did our own research on those seven metrics, those are the same seven metrics that are being used internationally and nationally. And Johns Hopkins University endorses those seven as the ones to watch. Harvard University endorses those seven as the ones to watch. CDC endorses those sevens as the ones to watch. So, we believe that metro health is monitoring the right data indicators. And so, you'll see the two-week decline in cases, the testing capacity, contact tracing, the capacity to contact trace, hospital trends, doubling time of COVID-19, how quick does it take for the cases to double? And then the positivity rate, or the percentage of those tested, and then the stress on local hospitals. Now, Dr. Wu released two weeks ago, within the last two weeks, a dash, a sub-dashboard of this for schools. And she extracted three indicators of the seven. And after looking at that a little bit more closely, it did make sense for us to have multiple indicators. We felt like the, her recommendations based on that matched essentially our recommendations and the rubric we're going to use for the percentage of students, depending on where the indicator bar is, it makes sense to reenter. And we felt like it just was less confusing. And so, what you'll see in the second document is our recommendations for board consideration for reentry protocols. And so, when you look at both of them together, you can see that the colors used in the bar, left to right, from dark green to dark red, they align. The adjectives used in phase one are safe, in phase two, moderate, phase three, steady, phase four, severe, and phase five, critical. That we matched in our reentry protocol, those same adjectives. In the protocol, or in the data dashboard from yesterday, you can see on the indicator bar, it's pointing to steady, right in the center of steady. In the last two weeks, it's went from far-right, critical, down to steady. So, given that it's steady, if you look at the school opening protocol in phase three, and you work your way down that column, when you look to the corresponding rows on the left, you'll see building status, you'll see an indicator for personal safety protocols, academic and instructional continuity, operations, this is the column on the far left, transportation, nutrition, and staff. So, essentially, each phase corresponds to each of those indicators. And then, from left to right, phase one to phase five, we have our recommendation, right? So, if you take phase three and you start with building status, because we're in phase three, it will tell you there, open with fifty, up to 50% of students, well, 50% of students or less, learning in person, on campus, and access to the public is very limited by permanent only. And we're going to follow all social distancing, risk mitigation guidelines. So, what that means is that based on the metro health data dashboard, we could start to introduce students not to exceed 50%, because we're holding steady right now. Now, we know that two-week intervals, that could change, because that's what we've seen. We've seen it go from critical to steady in two weeks. So, we plan on monitoring it daily, but being mindful of two-week intervals. We don't want to jump from one day to the next indicator and say, okay, now we got to get everybody out of school, or now we can bring everybody back. But in two-week blocks, we think that the trends kind of indicate what would make sense. So, just keep it on with the, just the sample of phase three all the way down. With regard to personal safety protocols, you'll see all the risk mitigation guidance. It's never changed since we were introduced to the pandemic in March. You know, you got to distance, you got to have face coverings, increase hand hygiene, hand washing, all those things. And the key there that we've learned is, if we do those things well on a daily basis, when we have a COVID incident, the impact on other employees and other students is really minimal when you do contact trace. But if we have to do contact tracing to find out that people were not within, you know, outside of six feet, they weren't wearing masks, they were in close contact for more than 15 minutes, then instead of just the one person being isolated or quarantined, now it's everybody that was in contact that wasn't following risk mitigation. So, for us, we're requiring all of our employees and students as they come in and follow all of those protocols, we're organized in that way, because when we have a positive COVID, I don't say if, but when, it can be really isolated, and we won't have to shut down schools, and we won't have to shut down the district in most cases by taking care of risk mitigation on the front end. The third indicator on the left column, academic and instructional continuity, again, going down the phase three column, you'll see that many students are learning completely remotely. And again, up to 50%, not to exceed that, but up to, can actually receive face-to-face instruction. It also says that UIO extracurricular activities resume. So, as a result of us moving into phase three this week on indicator bar, we moved up UIO activities. We weren't going to by UIO guidance, because we were critical the two weeks prior in the San Antonio area. We weren't going to start until the 31st. So, we moved it up one week to the 24th, because the status indicator is trending positive, and again, is in the phase three column. As it relates to operation, intensive sanitization occurs daily. Restrooms, handrails, all high-touch points are going to be sanitized frequently. Linda, I believe all of our units have landed, am I correct in saying that at this point?
They were due on Friday, but we said that by Monday will happen.
So, that's an additional 15 e-misters, which, that's the technology that allows coverage of an entire space really rapidly. High-level deep sanitization can happen really rapidly. This is going to be done frequently throughout the day, and be done on a daily basis in all of our schools, to all of our surfaces, and all the supplies that kids may touch. And this is in addition to all the wipe downs and sanitizations that would happen throughout the day and before and after kids come in contact, and staff come in contact with furniture or supplies, et cetera.
So, for a question, are classrooms going to be sanitized?
Yes.
After every class period?
Throughout the day, before kids, and after kids, kids and staff are part of that solution. Custodians in addition to that are going to do that throughout the day, and then the e-misters come on the top end of that. So, it's just a multi-layered effort. And again, what we're trying to teach our staff and students is that we can do all of those things, but if you're not washing your hands, if you're not wearing your PDE, if you're not distancing, it could undermine all that. And what we're also telling our staff in particular, and hopefully in our region, our community, is what you do outside of school has to kind of match these guidelines, because what we've experienced so far since March is, all of the positive cases that we've had in the district have all made community spread. So, what they're doing, work is working, right? When I'm passing the virus from one to another, we follow all the risk mitigation protocols. But then folks may go to a family function and gather in large groups, and then a couple of two or three days later, they have symptoms and they're positive. And so, to the extent possible, and it's very inconvenient for all of us, it has been since March, if we do those things well, then again, we can prevent having to respond with closing down and all of those things as the year goes on, which is the worst thing that can happen. We hope to gradually ramp students into our schools, you know, ramp up the percentage, and move towards normalcy throughout the year to the extent possible, particularly serving face-to-face students that need it the most, for which remote learning is absolutely inappropriate, but also for those families who otherwise cannot go to work if their children aren't in school. So, in order for us to be able to do that, we got to be, we got to do the things on the front end to really minimize the impact of COVID-19, so that we can keep moving forward with our plan in alignment with public health data. Because if public health data is trending positive, and we're not doing the things we need to do, and we have to shut down because we had, you know, five staff to send kids into high school, but city health report's moderate, looking really good, we still have to shut down over here. So, we want, if we do our part, we ought to be able to respond based on this data, is all I'm saying. And that's what we've been working on the last two weeks with staff, encouraging the community. And as we start to introduce students, encouraging students and their families, just stick with us, follow, it's frustrating, it's a pain, but we know that when you go through the protocols, it really does help us manage this entire pandemic, so we can do the things we need to do for the community through our schooling process. So, continuing down to phase three, we go to transportation. You can see that in the, with steady like we are now, social distancing and face coverings are required. So, we would put, basically, every kid when they came on, they'd be sanitized. We would wipe out all the seats before they came on, get sanitized. They'll sit one to a seat near a window, and every other window is open for ventilation. So, that allows us to get, you know, enough kids on a bus to fulfill the percentage of students that our surveys are suggesting want to come face-to-face, and keep them safe on the bus as well. So, we were prepared to do that. Then again, of course, as you can see from phase one to phase five, just if you take any one of these indicators like transportation, you're right. You can see, in phase one, you would have everybody able to ride the bus, 100%, because it's safe, right? But all the way to phase five, you would have no transportation provided, everybody's remote. Child nutrition in phase three, curbside meals for students. And for students who are on campus, we'll provide meals to students on campus, but we won't have them all gather in the cafeteria in the way that they traditionally would, because those groups would be too far. So, they would be eating in classrooms, they would be eating in very small groups, and then lunches would be staggered over a longer period of time, so that the kids would not have to convene for lunch if they're on campus. And then, the last point I want to make about staff, you can see there in phase three, that all staff are at work and doing their job. But if you go all the way across to phase five, just bottom right corners, let's just say that we were in phase five, I do wear a couple of weeks ago. This is when staff came back, by the way. We were in phase five on the dashboard. And some staff were concerned that, hey, why can't we work remotely like other districts are allowing staff to do? And again, we feel like in order for us to stand up remote learning, in order for our teachers to have instructional resources they need, in order for them to have the furniture and equipment they need, whiteboards, the tools to teach and do demonstrations, and for us to be able to support them and monitor them as they get familiar with this new mode of teaching, which even as the year goes on, there will be kids who choose remote-only all year long, and the commissioners allow that for the whole year. So, every teacher's going to have to teach remotely every day, whether we have kids back in the building or not. So, they got to get good at it, so we need them in the buildings, is our position. So, the bottom right, even in phase five, you'll see that limited scheduled staff is completing essential tasks, instructional staff are reporting as directed and approved by supervisors. So, point being is, our employees, no matter what the state of COVID-19 is, are going to be working from our facilities. And this means that a teacher is in their classroom by themselves. They have 800 to 1,000 square feet in isolation. With all the materials and resources they need, with all of our risk mitigation protocols in place, and all our sanitization and cleaning disinfecting protocols in place, teachers will literally go from their car to their classroom, from their classroom to their car, with very little need to gather and convene, particularly in ways that are going to circumvent of risk mitigation expectations for distancing, face covering, et cetera. And so, under no circumstances are they ever going to be at risk, no matter the state of COVID-19 based on our protocols. In fact, we've expressed to them, you're safer than you are going to HEB at work. You're safer than you are going, you're safe as you are going to go hospital at work with what we have in place. So, our staff from now and throughout the year will be at work, and they will be doing their job from our buildings. The only thing that can circumvent that is what we saw in the spring, which was a governor ordered shutdown and closure. If that happens, if that were to happen, hopefully, we've had at least an opportunity to practice for several weeks, so that if we have to have teachers teaching from their preferred location, we can sure and sure, we can still ensure quality. And we'll share today some of the tools and resources that we have to still be able to sit in on all of their class instruction, to monitor the engagement of students, the alignment to the curriculum, the quality of the instructional delivery and student engagement, so that we're still guaranteeing the kids have what they need, that they're connecting, that they are learning, that the teachers are delivering good instruction across grade levels, across contexts, and we'll share that a little later. So, thirdly, you have this little spreadsheet. This was last week, and we made even a little adjustment to this as of yesterday. But we, this is our phasing plan. We know that as soon as school starts, we're going to have students in our buildings. And these are students of employees, children of employees, pre-K through eighth grade, who are essential for delivering instruction. In other words, if they have no childcare, they've exhausted every resource that they have for childcare, they're able to bring their children to our buildings, we're not providing childcare, we're not providing direct instruction, but we're going to provide a safe learning zone, where they will have access to technology to participate in their distance learning as if they were at home. But in this particular case, to avoid teachers and instructional staff from going out on FF-CRA, we're doing this to make sure we can deliver all what is our primary function for this community, and that's instruction. So, those students are, those plans have already been made. All the plans and the protocols are in place, and they'll be starting on Monday. In phase two, we're starting, we're opening up our early childhood, which we call internally, we call our employee daycare. But that's our three-year-old program for students that we've identified special needs through Childfind and the community that are as young as three years old. And these students, we have to begin to serve in that pre-K model. And we have, and our model includes matching them with an age-appropriate peer that does not have special needs. And that's, in order to do that, we've offered that program for many years to our employees who have three-year-olds as employee daycare, and they pay tuition for that. So, you can see in the table, the estimate of students that that would include, relatively small number, but those students would be in their classroom with their instructional staff, beginning week two, being provided their instruction face-to-face. In addition to that, we're currently looking at the students who are special needs, who are in our most, our most high-need environments. So, we're talking about life skills and redirection. These are students with greatest needs for our services and the least likely to thrive in remote settings. And so, of that bunch, we're looking at the ones who have such severe needs that remote learning will be absolutely, no matter the support they have at home, inappropriate and ineffective. And we intend to bring that subset of students in also, week two, and they'll be in their classroom, receiving face-to-face instruction from their staff that served them. In addition to that, strength and conditioning, as I mentioned earlier, is going to start before and after school for our athletic programs at the high school. And then after yesterday, we're also in the process of identifying students from households who have no internet and no devices. In other words, the first week of school, despite their best intentions and our best intentions, we know they have no connectivity. And we know that because they're on a wait list. As of yesterday and through this weekend, we would have distributed everything we have. We've emptied our shelves of Chromebooks, we've emptied our shelves of hotspots. We do have 3,000 Chromebooks coming, and we have 1,000 more hotspots on the way. But because of the supply and demand, there's an eight to 14-week lead time on those devices. And they've already been ordered. We ordered the first 1,000 several weeks ago. So, we've got this laddy time where those that needed a device, and we use several pieces of data to prioritize those that we know need them upon request. And there are still some, and we're reconciling these numbers between now and this weekend to determine how many kids at each campus actually need it and won't have it. So, the first week of school, we're going to essentially serve them in a non-technical way, the best way that we can, but we're not going to count their attendance. We're going to no-show them that first week, because otherwise, they're at risk of truancy, because the commissioner's not waiving truancy requirements, even though we're remote-only, and students don't have access to quote-unquote "come to school." So, our strategy's going to be to no-show them, and week two, bring them to school. So, this next week is identifying them, communicating with them, preparing for their safe learning zones, week two. Because when we bring them in, at least that second week, we're going to kind of treat them like employee kids in that, we're going to put them in very small groups, distance, and make sure they have all the technology they need, and they have some support throughout the day and supervision, so that they have a place in our buildings where they can learn, start to learn remotely that second week. And why are we not doing face-to-face that second week with that group? Because that's the second week teachers are still trying to stand up their remote teaching platform. And again, we feel like we don't want to rush too fast where they're not good at it, and then when we find ourselves in a, if we find ourselves in a full shutdown situation where they're at home having to teach, and they're not, they're ill-equipped to do that, now we're providing shoddy instruction and service to our community. So, we feel like that second week we bring those students to school, they'll have all the technology they need, they'll have the support they need, they'll learn like every other student in the community, but they'll be in our building. So, we'll provide transportation, we'll provide meals, we'll provide resources, and they'll just be accessing learning virtually, but they'll get support throughout the day that they otherwise would not have at home due to no devices and potentially no academic support. We move down to week three. Again, continuing to ratchet up the number of special needs students. This would be the second group of those high-need life skills and redirection students. The second group that are probably going to struggle those first two weeks, but they are going to be able to make some academic progress. But that third week, we feel like it's time to get them into our buildings, into their instructional setting, being supported by the staff that serves them in the program they're served in. In addition to that, number six, student consideration. Those are students that we're paying particular attention to, because in March, these were students that you might have heard us talking about when we were going to those households, weekly delivering additional resources, whether instructional, whether meals, whether basic needs. These are students who are experiencing significant trauma. They're in very, very difficult situations at home, and they have very little or anything as to support their learning. And so, in addition to what we're doing for every other kid, we know that these kids struggled to engage in the spring. And by this point, we're going to monitor week one or two. If any of those kids continue to not be able to engage because of their circumstances, then we're also going to start to bring those kids in week three as well, and again, into those safe learning zones. Because week four, depending on how the data dashboard looks, we'll come back to the board with a recommendation for how y'all want to handle the next four weeks. And if the trend continues, week four and beyond's going to be, here's the survey data we have, this is the percentage of students in our community who want face-to-face instruction, campus by campus. And as it's trending right now, our plan is to say, week four and beyond, we're ready to open up our doors and provide face-to-face instruction for those who want it. And we know that about 50% enrollment in every one of our schools, given all the spaces that we have, enables us to keep the student, the teacher ratio and the percent of students small enough to keep them distanced, to keep them safe, and to transition them throughout the day in a normal school day in a way that enables everybody to feel like, to know that they'll be safe, given all the risk mitigation guidelines and mandates that we're expecting to incorporate. And so, the short of it is, we've really been thoughtful. We're aligning everything we're doing to public health data. We're not getting pulled down by the politics on any end of this spectrum. We're surveying our community and seeing what their needs and wants are. We're looking at academic needs of students, social-emotional needs of students. We've got a very thoughtful phasing plan with the ability to adapt when new variables present themselves, adapt really quickly, which, like I said last night, when we learned that there are more students than we thought that aren't going to have devices, we're adapting to phase them in week two before we otherwise work. And because the community health data shows they're steady, we're being responsible in doing that based on medical data in our community. And so, the long of it is that I suspect we're going to find ourselves in a difficult situation if more than 50% of our students want to be in our buildings, and we still have a pandemic in our community, the virus spreading in our community. Because we will not be able to tell the community that we can keep, maintain social distance in our buildings if more than 50% of our students are in schools at any one time. So, to that point, what we do have from the commissioner is flexibility for the high school to be hybrid, meaning you can have a group show up on A-Day and a group show up on B-Day, which, right now, we only got about 40% of our high school students wanting face-to-face, which means we don't even need a hybrid schedule. But if we find ourselves in a situation where our community's feeling really comfortable and confident in our ability to keep everybody safe, and the trend line of COVID-19 is really tracking positive, and more than 50% of students want to be in our building, the board's just going to have to make some decisions along the way about how we want to handle it. As far as a hybrid option for any other grade level, it doesn't exist. Essentially, anybody that wants face-to-face needs to be accommodated if we're going to be funded. And again, if we find ourselves in a situation where this community, by way of its board trustees feels like, you know, more than 50% is still not trustees feels like, you know, more than 50% is still not safe, or we have more than 50% wanting it, we might find ourselves in a position where we might have to do what's right for our community and take legal action against the agency if they choose not to fund us. And you may have heard Dr. Williams make a statement to that effect from Northside ISD in the last couple of weeks. That's what he was referring to, is that ultimately, our local board of trustees is going to make the right decision based on our community feedback, our community's needs, our student needs, and public health data. And if that means that we're not going to have the ability to serve every day, every kid that wants face-to-face, and that's a decision the board makes, then we're going to be funded for it, and if the agency says we're not, then we're going to have to take the precaution. I just want to put that on your radar because ultimately, this board of trustees is going to make the decisions that best meet the need of the community that you guys serve. Yes, ma'am? No, yeah, yeah, please.
I just didn't want to stop you.
Please.
But I just want to ask real quick, at the point that you said that you have a less now of students with no connectivity, what does that number look like?
So we're going to reconcile between now and Sunday. Yeah, as of yesterday, some camp, elementary camps had as many as 20. But we're still, what happened is, we surveyed the community about their needs, and then we sent out a request form. And we pushed out, hey, if you don't, you know, fill out this questionnaire and indicate to us based on the number of students you have and what school day it's in, whether you have internet connectivity, whether you have a device for every kid or not. And then through that, we generated a request form for technology. We also ran student academic data. We ran data on, the students were on free and reduced lunch. We ran student, data on the students that are in our E.C. Cares program. These are students who have experienced severe trauma either recently or at any point in their life. Shannon, that's three indicators. What are the other two? We ran five buckets of data.
Socioeconomic, can you put that together?
Yep.
Did you say you have a high, you said academically?
Academically. E.C. Cares data. Free, reduced.
Free, reduced.
There's one more.
It was, I think it was tied to STAR.
Yeah, the academic.
Or that was, it was. Oh, it was not making progress in the spring. It was the spring, no contact.
So in the spring, you had to report to the commissioner which students, were they engaged and then fell off, were they never engaged, were they not engaged and then came on? So based on the ones that were not engaged and never were engaged, those were obviously a higher priority. So we took those five categories and we gave kids a point for each, and if they met all five, then obviously that kid's a priority compared to the kids that met one. So we used requests, we overlaid that data, and then the campuses determined a list of priorities, and that's how they distributed technology. Well, once we got to this week, some families realized, man, this is for real. I didn't fill out the request form, but I need a request. So they had to request devices from their principal, and then the principal would use the same data to figure out where they fit on the priority list. But then in addition to that, we've got a lot of new students enrolling in the district. We also then, as part of enrollment, are asking them if they need technology. And so, long story short, we've not exceeded the number of devices that are being requested as compared to the number of devices we have. And so, again, yesterday, there were some campuses with as few as 10 and as many as 20, but those numbers are still growing. Secondary campuses are seeing a little bit larger numbers. So we believe that there could be a few hundred students that fall into this category by the time we're ready to reintroduce second week.
How does that request go along?
So it's pushed out through FIA, Social, and Internet, electronic. And now, having said that, every campus did call every kid, particularly the ones that are on their rosters, that did not fill out the survey. So every household received the call, which is, thank you for that question, by the way, because I didn't mention, that's also ways they're generating request forms is, they noticed that Monique's didn't fill out the survey, Monique's kids didn't engage in the spring, we know Monique's kids are coming, he called Monique and said, hey, are you still coming? He said, yes. We noticed you didn't fill out the request form, you have technology, and principals are generating requests. They've been doing that for several weeks, actually. So. Yeah, so with all those efforts, we think we've got about as accurate a determination of need for technology as possible. Now, Ms., yes, sir?
Now, the two-week grace that we was, do we still have that since we began opening up, when we slowly opened up, you know, as I was saying, we use two weeks, do we still have that based on we used it in that?
So we are technically opening on Monday, which is the day we're supposed to open.
Okay.
So remote, so we do have four weeks of flexibility.
That's correct.
So what it means is that if we were all remote, which we're not going to be other than the first, well, technically, first week of school, based on our plan, but if we're all remote up to four weeks and no students were in our buildings, we could still be funded and we could still count those four weeks as if we were in school. And the next four weeks is up to the school board.
Up to the school board. So the four weeks, we could use that?
Yes, sir.
We still have options, we can use whatever we want to use. Is this what I asked you?
So the first four weeks are the only time you could use it?
Oh, the only time they're going to use it?
Yeah. So like if, let's say it's December and we decide to go all remote?
Yes.
They wouldn't count, basically it's a school closure. So we'd have to make those days up in June.
Labor, Labor Day. Okay, we're opening up, maybe this, when you're talking about 50%?
So our plans on Labor Day are any student who requested face-to-face, then will be allowed to come face-to-face.
And optional, the ones that want to stay.
The ones that want to stay remote can stay remote, and they can do so all year long if they choose.
If they choose, but after Labor Day, we could use the competition. Look like your thing that you have here to me is, here's the order, it's not a student, required mask, if a teacher doesn't want to wear a mask. You're not saying mandatory, you're saying required.
Hold on.
So if a teacher doesn't want to wear a mask, we can do anything.
Oh, yeah, we can. It's against the condition of employment.
Okay, so that, so they have to wear a mask. Okay, students the same?
So the governor's order is they have to wear a mask. By order, and as an employee, they're going to wear a mask.
Okay.
Students also have to wear a mask.
Have to wear a mask.
By governor's order, 10 years and younger don't have to. But here in East Central, we're going to, we're going to ask for a face covering, and there are several options. This, for example, may not be developmentally appropriate for some kids, depending on their age and their personal needs. So we'll, we'll either provide these, shields, a desk carol, splash guard. Yeah, multiple options because we just felt like, based on the community feedback we had gotten, the 10 or younger not, not having to wear anything, no splash guard, no protection at all. According to our community feedback, they were comfortable with that.
Got you.
Special needs kids will also, depending on their condition, will be provided some appropriate PPE, which could be, you know, a splash guard carol that they're behind while receiving instruction or interaction with other students if they can't wear face covering or shoes.
Well, no, these are blocking intensive sanitizing. How are we going to monitor that? Like this is happening. I mean, if you said, we're looking at restroom handles and sanitizing the desk after school to get out, that's, that's impossible to monitor, all right? Or we're going to have somebody that's really got a checklist if this is happening?
So for custodial services, there are checklists and times and initial off and verification that they do these things on these frequencies. But we're, what we're telling staff and students, that don't rely on that as enough. Then every employee, so I'm a teacher, I've got a group of kids coming to me at nine o'clock, I'm sanitizing all touchpoints, I'm sanitizing all equipment or, you know, supplies. Kids interact with them. Before it goes from one kid to another, we're wiping down again, or when that class leaves, before the next one comes in, we're wiping all that down. Kids, when they come in the room, are going to hand sanitize, they're going to hand sanitize when they're out, transition, and hand sanitize when they leave the room. But students are also going to be taught that in your area, you're going to wipe it down, you're going to wipe your stuff down, and when you leave, you're going to wipe, count and wipe your stuff down. Keep in mind, the teacher did it before they did it, and the teacher's doing it after they did it again. Now, can we guarantee it?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, but EMIS is coming throughout the day as well.
Yes.
In addition to all of that, which is.
Who's coming?
EMIS.
Okay.
Backpacks, spray, vapor, engulcuses, encompasses 360 degrees, any three-dimensional object instantaneously. So, you know, you wipe down the surface, or you're wiping down the legs and underneath, probably not, but EMIS does all that.
Parents going to be allowed to come on campus during this session?
No, sir.
Nobody on campus with the children in their party?
They come for meetings, they say they got a meeting with the council.
What's going on?
Control access by community order.
Bring in lunch on campus. Did you discuss that?
I didn't discuss that, but not doing that. Not at this point, based on public health data. And we'll also, are going to be deploying, and actually, we'll probably talk a little bit about it later, but I might as well mention it now, we're using an automated health screener that will be deployed in the next week or two, which is basically going to require every employee and every child before they come to work or school to complete their screener on the application. It's a series of quick questions, their date of temperature, their symptoms, and they will not be allowed to work or school until they've completed that. And we'll be able to keep that information in a database, and over time, they will see trends and patterns. So maybe we start to see symptoms popping up in an area of our school district, which could precede a possible COVID outbreak. So it's just information that we'll be able to track on the dashboard, and then down fine grade, if Roland had, the employee, has done his survey, and the last three days he indicated one or two indicators, but it didn't flag to stay home, and then all of a sudden, I've got symptoms and I do stay home, we can contact trace and say, well, he started to show some of these symptoms on Wednesday, today's Saturday. So actually, we could start to count on Wednesday. Right now, we don't have that data. So it would just help us be more efficient in contact tracing, but also more proactive in monitoring what seems to be happening in people's self-assessment daily and guaranteeing that people are doing. Now, can I guarantee somebody actually took temperature and then just put a number in? We can't, but at least it's better than what we currently have, which is a Google form that we're asking people to fill out. This would be an app on the phone, takes five minutes or less every day. Employees, kids, and any visitor will have to complete that before we allow them to the meeting that they have scheduled by Monday.
Yeah, lots of work today.
So for school districts, they're using, they're using the 14-day decline, which currently is severe.
Doubling.
They're using the doubling rate, which is moderate, and they're using the positivity rate, which is currently critical. So when you use those three, you would see the subset of this data, which only has three bars instead of five, I believe they use safe, severe, and critical, if I'm correct on that, actually. So basically, you're either all safe, you're severe or critical. And currently, I believe it's in the severe category if you use the education subset. But what I was pointing to earlier is when you look at Dr. Wu's recommendation for severe, you can have up to 50% of your students in the building in the severe category. So it's just confusing, right? You got two different dashboards basically saying the same thing to schools in terms of guidance. So I'm not real sure why she pulled this subset out, but after really evaluating it, bringing all of our nurses together, evaluating it, it just didn't make sense to do something that's different. And we feel like, you know, the five categories gives a real indication of what the community situation looks like and what we can do now as a school system. It's not as ambiguous. I mean, you go from, can't have anybody in the building to everybody in the building? Severe to green, nobody to everybody? Like, we just, it doesn't make sense to us.
And then, have we had any teachers that have any health issues that have, that are concerned about putting in?
I believe we've had three who chose to resign. Three of roughly 800. All the others are good. I think once they came to work, they realized what the conditions were going to be, they felt more comfortable. You know, the first few days, we had a little bit of, hey, I saw, I saw Linda over there, she didn't have her mask on. You know, there was a little bit of that going on, but it's new to all of us, right? Getting used to wearing PPE and distancing all day, every day is a little bit different. Not for us who have been here since March, but for teachers who have not been here since March, it was very new. But once they saw that we're serious about it, and if this is the way we're going to operate, and you guys do your teacher planning, you're going to be spaced, you're going to be, you know, virtual to the extent possible when you're face-to-face, you're going to be distanced, PPE, the meetings are going to be short, concise, et cetera, they felt more comfortable. So we feel like they feel pretty confident that we got a good plan, and as long as we're using public health data to decide when we bring any kids, how many and when, they seem to be okay with that.
On the, on this spreadsheet that you gave us, where you talked about the smallest subset of number five, I believe that's our life skills.
Life skills and redirection, yes, sir.
Are they going to be getting all services depending, or are they going to get some refused service?
So in cases where some of the services might be considered for reduction, that would be through an R. So in some cases, some of those services through briefs are being revisited. And we did some of that in the spring because we were all virtual.
Continuity plans. That are like continuity plans, so some of those are still in effect, just if parents don't want them to return, and then they'll go to R if they want to change something.
Yeah, so there are some cases where some parents don't want them to return, and we're not able to provide some of those services locally, but a parent is agreeing in an R to make that adjustment. So we have to take those case by case and make sure that what we're providing matches the IEP, and we have to work together with parents to make those adjustments. Otherwise, we'll be obligated to those services, which we couldn't provide.
And a lot of them, we can provide virtually.
I'm sorry?
Like, a lot of them, we can provide virtually, speech therapy, things like that, we can provide virtually.
The county regenerates use the health department data. Are they looking, are these numbers the entire county, or are these numbers broken up by what?
These numbers are the entire county. And so, what they can't provide us, which we would need, really, is more fine-grained data about the county. Their position, when we presented that, is that people in all these quadrants migrate to work, migrate to, for social interaction, migrate for retail shopping into all areas of the county. And so, from a public health standpoint, it seems like.
I want to call the [inaudible].
Yeah, I'm just telling you what the response was. So what we're going to do in our data is, as we look at this, we might say, well, it's, I mean, public health data is in Phase Two, it's looking really good, but we've had 27 COVID cases in East Central. We're recommending to not reenter as if it's free. And just the opposite, public health data is Phase Five, but we haven't had a positive case in three D's. We're going to continue with our plan. So we are considering what happens in East Central ISD, but it can work both ways. We can find a more, a more dangerous trend here than the county's [inaudible] and just the opposite. So for us right now, Phase Three's trending really nicely. We've had a few cases this past week, staff across the district, on campuses and off, but no more than we've been having since March. So we don't have any reason to believe that things are spiking in our community. So we feel like Phase Three still matches what we see locally, but there could be a mismatch at any point, and what's happening here is going to take precedence in our recommendations.
I just want to make sure that we're doing, place to our community.
Yes, sir.
The northwest side, Sam.
No, sir.
I agree with you because they, when they, they're taking tests, they're getting averages, and they know where those positive cases are. And if they're, they can identify where the hot spots, truly the hot spots are in things. And like you said, they're in the northwest quadrant, so they have nothing to do with that.
And what we know is if the student or staff member's positive, we know that because they have to report that to us through our protocols and through our screeners. So we'll know if we have people in our schools, which matters less to us than if we have someone in China Grove or someone in Omen Door. If they're in our schools, that's what we're concerned about. We can't control what happens in any of our municipalities. We can't let five, five people in China Grove. We can't let five, five people in China Grove that are positive shut our school now.
Exactly.
So we're using school data.
They're investigating their numbers anyways. You know, they're, they're investigating the numbers anyways.
You have, you have the quick test, that if you get a positive, it's acceptable, but if you get a negative, well, you have to do the real test, and that takes four days when they get the negative. So they'll accept a positive test, but they won't accept a negative test if it's a quick test, which is okay.
Yeah.
What are you trying to do here?
So once again, I like the idea that we are looking at, like Steve said, us, and then we're applying, uh, what we've done, our protocol, you know, contact tracing, our cleaning, who's who goes to who. We're using that as our, uh, our rule and not as one size fits all, like they want to do out there.
That's right.
We're supposed to be there with special departments.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so for contact tracing, just to further illustrate that point, we've had situations, we do contact tracing, we give guidance for metro health, but ultimately, we make the decision. So while in many cases, we follow the guidance, we agree with the guidance, right? As it was presented. In other cases, we feel like a slight amendment to that guidance makes the most sense as it related to the well-being of that employee, uh, and those that were affected, and our, the integrity of our system, right? So we have the ultimate authority to make the best decision for that circumstance and for our organization, and we'll make the best decision. Sometimes it's very aligned to metro health, other times it's aligned, but with a subtle adjustment that, that is best for that situation. We'll continue to do that.
We're not doing any temperature checks ourselves. We're hanging off everybody to do it.
Yep, yes, sir. And that, uh, is actually guidance for medical, uh, professionals that temperature checks are, they're actually not effective, and that you're really creating a more unsafe situation if you gather people to temperature check. So we just need people to self-assess everything.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why we're trying to use the app that's more formal, and we can, we know immediately, actually, it'll send a reminder, hey, school, you're supposed to start school at nine o'clock, and you still haven't done your app, it'll send you a text. You still haven't done your screener. So employees and students will, often families will get a reminder all the way up until that time hits, and it'll flash red and say, you can't go to school, you can't go to work, do you do this? And, and then the supervisor or the principal will know immediately who still hasn't done it. So then, anybody shows up to work, you can get out in front of it and say, James, you hadn't done it. You can't come to work today. Get on, get your app done. Get your screener, self-screener done. So anyway, just trying to be proactive to the extent possible.
That's a good idea.
Quick question, this started to introduce in class. So I-
Huh? It's a draft.
So I have, code phase three is a steady, steady reduction in, uh, trans, uh, transmission. And then we go to phase four, severe and uncontrolled, and then we go to critical and uncontrolled. Is, can we possibly look into changing that from severe and uncontrolled to severe and increasing levels?
Severe and increasing, and then critical and uncontrolled. Do you get that, Kelly?
Instead of having, because it looks like, then there would be like a progression from steady and reduction, then you go from severe into uncontrolled. So I think, in my opinion, we all, uh, severe and increasing levels of COVID.
Yep, that makes perfect sense.
That's all I might suggest.
Okay.
If it was already produced-
It has, it has, we, we shared it as a draft with principals, shared it as a draft for feedback from the community, and they know that our goal today was the best of what all the feedback's been to the board for some final feedback. So that's perfect.
Everybody good? Because Moe, your, your mic is confusing with the [inaudible].
All right, I'll make sure. But I heard the story.
Is this one of my course [inaudible]? I look at these pictures of their [inaudible] and just [inaudible]. To keep my focus, I gotta have my stuff, so. Now I'm losing my freaking mind. You what?
You're in here twice. Did you call back?
All right, everybody ready? We're done, any more questions?
Um-
All right, let's move on to twenty twenty Tascataisby Convention and Delegate.
County, in your [inaudible], you have information? You have information about this year's Tascataisby Convention? Uh, they made the decision a couple of weeks ago, uh, for that convention to be completely virtual. And so if you're interested in attending the conference virtually, get with Margaret and get you signed up. Um, but in addition to that, um, Mr. Massengill, you'll need to select a delegate, delegate convention, and a alternate for the delegate convention at the Tascataisby Virtual Conference.
Do that thing, make me, right now? Right now?
Yes, sir.
Who wants to do it?
I do.
All right, Victor, you can, you can tag for the delegate. Who wants to do the, uh-
Surprise, surprise.
Altman. Anybody want to be an alternate?
Look, yeah.
Claudia will be the alternate, all right. Victor and Claudia.
Victor's the delegate, Claudia, okay. We'll give that.
I need to go off, please, so.
All right. Is that all that? I'd like to buy twenty twenty-one academic school year calendar, Mr. Discon.
Trustees, in your missive package, you have a copy of next year's school calendar, which you previously approved with one slide amendment. We met with Bear County Elections, Linda, was that last week? And Jackie Calvin, who's the, uh, Bear County Elections Administrator, uh, informed the group that, uh, um, there were concerns about the ability to conduct the election, uh, given that there was difficulty securing sites. Typically, they rely on school districts to provide multiple sites, and one of the concerns that she had at debate the group was that by law, they cannot require any PPE for voters. And so for that reason, obviously, all of us in schools that are going through all these great wings to make sure that our schools are safe, and that we're following all risk mitigation precautions, that if we were in school while the election is happening, as we typically are, and we gave access to Bear County Elections to multiple campuses, which we typically do, that we could conceivably have staff and students who are following risk mitigation guidelines and citizens from across the area voting who are not. And so for that reason, uh, given that the election is so important always, we didn't want to curtail accessibility to folks in our community to vote on Election Day, but we also knew that we didn't want to expose our staff and children potentially. So the consensus that we, that we came to, and this was, uh, what several districts in the county agreed was, what if we flipped, uh, Battle of Flowers holiday, made it School Day for this year only, and made November third Election Day a holiday, so that we could give Bear County Elections access to our campuses on Election Day, which would normally be a school day? Because our initial response to the request was, you're going to have to find another location. Well, when you superimpose that response across school districts in the county, they lost hundreds of sites. So it was a major issue. So our recommendation to the board is to consider flipping those two, uh, and making November third a holiday for this year, given the circumstances, and Battle of Flowers a School Day. And so it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't affect our instructional minutes, it wouldn't affect anything else other than we would be able to offer the three campus locations we always do for Election Day, uh, and we wouldn't have to have staff or students in the building. So not a problem that they're, they don't have to wear PPE. Uh, we'll, and Bear County Elections does a great job, as they did during the runoff election in the spring. Did a great job sanitizing, you know, all of their staff are highly trained, wear PPE, they're very structured. They cleaned up everything after, of course, we did before and after as well. Um, but we feel like, uh, we'd be doing our part on Election Day to support accessibility for our, our citizens in the area, uh, to the, the normal, um, number of sites that they're used to.
I don't really know, um, I, I often question how many people really attend, um, but how many people really go to Battle of Flowers anymore? You know, I mean, I mean, I think they just have holiday and maybe utilize it for other things other than down there in the crowd, like, so. Why?
For Battle of Flowers parades and stuff? That plays a jam.
I know, but I mean, like, school kids, you think they would-
Well-
John will win.
Well, you don't know.
I was in the parade every year.
There is a, a little bit, there's some validity to what you're saying as regards to schools, because the last few years, they've curtailed our ability to participate significantly.
Yeah.
Um, and it's made it very difficult for our student groups who historically participated to actually get to participate. And so we found ourselves not being nearly as involved. So we do like the Battle of the Bands event, but the parades and stuff, we don't even participate anymore, because they made it almost impossible for any of our groups to participate.
Yeah.
Uh, and so for that reason, if that's going to continue, it might, in the long run, not, not really be worth a holiday, like honestly, for school practices.
I've been at that parade every year.
Yeah, that's right.
And I would tell you that our seating section at that parade, four hundred seats, was jammed back there.
Yeah. My kids used to say, yeah, but I don't like that.
Yeah, as long as our bands are, and it just, they're not getting where, it's selective and, and alternative, so you don't get to go in here, so anyway. We'll see.
No, no, I, I was freshman year, I was within three, a hundred yards of the eye of Iowa, because also is the East Central whole band when we started doing that.
But do y'all notice that little hotspot in my tattoo that they're posting?
No. And trust me, I didn't really want to be there, but I had to be because I was a member of the [inaudible]. Where were you? You-
I was cheering on.
Yeah, all right. No, you were on, you were at the dam on the, it's late, I know what you were doing. It's on video, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody knew.
Calendar was not-
Not the whole district, that was [inaudible]. That's okay, because I enjoy it.
So that's the recommendation.
All right, we have a recommendation from the school board, because I've been, uh, preoccupied, to approve the revised twenty twenty-one academic school year calendar. Do I have a motion?
Full move.
Have a motion from Mr. James Mulkey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Victor Carzle. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we can move on to- Item B, approval of the amended revised order for the November third twenty twenty trustee election for single member election for single member district three, four, and six, due to governor extending the early voting dates beginning October thirteenth twenty twenty from October nineteenth twenty twenty to October thirtieth twenty twenty. Mr. Discon?
Yes, sir. So as you, as you just stated, the governor did extend the period for early voting. It was from October nineteenth to October thirtieth, which is the order that the board previously approved. Uh, with the governor's, uh, extension, uh, starting early voting on the thirteenth instead of the nineteenth and running through thirty, the board just needs to amend that order to reflect that. And so what we're bringing to you today is an amended order, uh, changing early voting from October nineteenth to October thirtieth to October thirteenth to October thirtieth, per governor's order.
Can we, uh, early voting, district early voting, sorry?
Yes, sir. The board.
Yes, sir, the board. This board will be early voting, sorry. A lot of [inaudible].
We, uh, there was, uh, one year, I think, where we had the high school, that's where we voted aside. We're not going to do that this year.
Any other questions? All right, we have a recommendation from Mr. Discon Superintendent to approve the election order as presented. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Have a motion from Mr. Victor Carzle? Have a second? Have a second from Mr. Steve Ryan? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item six, goal setting and [inaudible], Mr. Discon.
Yes, sir. Trustees, in your missive package, you have a copy of the slide deck. Uh, there are seven slides, will be [inaudible]. In addition, we'll have it projected on the, uh, screen behind the dice, and also in your electronic package, it's [inaudible]. Uh, the board agenda is also found on page fifteen. So, uh, at this time, we'll jump right into it, if it's okay. And our hope is to kind of take you through the process that you're very familiar with, uh, really quickly, of how we get to, uh, the plan which we established our goals and annual goals measures, which we've already brought to the board and received your approval on, just to, um, level set on how different the improvement process has become in recent years, and then take you to, um, through an example of how our CD process, uh, uh, is cascading, goals, and, and, um, annual goal measures and strategies down through the entire organization so that there's alignment, and then finally end with a few big goals that we're open to, to deliver on this year. So, a vote.
Good morning. Um, so our timeline is very similar to what it's been in the past. The, we start this work, as we shared with you at Conley in April, when we met to do, uh, our goal setting, uh, then. So it starts around March with campuses, um, we train everybody, get everybody set, um, and then they go through the process of going through their needs assessment. And then in their needs assessment, they create their goals, what they're going to focus on based on those big needs that bubble up as priorities on their campuses and in their departments. And then, once they create their goals, then they work on their improvement plan. Um, and those, the strategies and things that they're going to do to make, uh, and achieve those goals throughout the year. Then, once they, uh, do that, then we bring those to you. So the, we brought the district goals to you already for approval. We'll be bringing the, uh, campus and department goals to you next week for approval. And then in September, uh, they've already completed the draft, and they're currently working on the draft and their approval plan. We'll be bringing those to you in September for your approval as well. Then, once all those are complete, then each quarter, they go through and they work their plan. They implement their strategies, um, work with their staff and their, uh, students on those plans, and then they update it quarterly on their progress, kind of where are they? Um, it's a little dipstick of where they're going, so by the end of the year, they have their tracking to make those goals. Um, and then as they go through, if things change or as things come up, they can always revise their, their plans to reflect that. So that's a big kind of overview, and then the timeline for next year starts again in around March.
So just a couple of points of emphasis. Our previous improvement process used to be something that started when schools started.
Yeah.
And it was an event, and it was a compliance-oriented thing that one person on every campus or in every department may have done, and then we checked the box and it's out on the shelf. This process is iterative, it's continuous improvement, it's continuous growth, and there are, um, there's a cadence of accountability now that quarterly, we're monitoring progress throughout the quarter and making adjustments, and then reporting that publicly and outwardly and internally every quarter throughout the year, because what we wanted to do is get a, a process in place that caused us to say, here are the things that are most important, here's what we're going to do about it, and then in real time, are we getting it done? And if, if not, what are we doing about it? And making those adjustments throughout the year as well as, as opposed to waiting for the autopsy at the end and looking in the rearview mirror, as opposed to constantly looking out the windshield and really making wise decisions in real time to get the outcomes that we want. So I know you guys know this, I just wanted to point that back out. And so you see the timeline, and we actually started work for this year in March, in a very structured, disciplined way, all the way up until we had our leadership retreat, when leadership came back three, you know, two, three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, so then, the, the next slide just points to a, a piece you guys have already approved, and the board goal continues to be to provide exceptional teaching and learning environment for staff and students. And we broke, uh, our, our priority- And we broke our, our priorities into four. The first and most important priority being teaching and learning. Our second priority is a high performing and engaged workforce. Our third priority is to develop inclusive and collaborative partnerships. And our fourth priority is resource and operational excellence essentially fiscal responsibility. On the far right of that document, if you've already approved, you'll see our CBAS pillars. And you can see the pillars, there are seven pillars, but you can see the four pillars that relate to priority one. That is engage well-rounded students, student safety and wellbeing, student learning and progress, and post-secondary readiness. You can see the quality and commitment and staff pillar relates to priority two. Community engagement and partnerships pillar relates to priority three. And the fiscal and operational systems pillar relates to priority four. And then you can see each of the annual results measures that correspond with each of those priorities and community-based accountability pillars that the board had already approved. We took these district annual results measures and those are, were used to drive campus and department development of their goals. And we're going to show how that's, how that's now developed into alignment and cascading of this effort so that we're all working towards achieving the same outcomes with respect to our specific campus and specific departments. So we all see where we fit in the puzzle of achieving our greatest intentions.
So I'm going to look at, so in your chart, this first priority or this first annual results measure in the blue for priority two, I'm going to take that priority from the district and to show you how it was developed down through the campuses.
Yeah, so the one annual results measure that you guys have approved at the district level, board level is in order to achieve equality staff, one hundred percent in campuses, departments, and sub-departments, mutually develop key performance indicators for employees that are aligned in the district's vision, vision, values, and goals. Okay, so now we're going to show you how we got to extract the language from plans across the organizations. Shannon?
So we just, I just went in and took out, where did this goal show up in their plan? How did, how does it represent? And so I put it in this chart. So the board goal, as Mr. Skoda said, the district will provide exceptional learning environment. He read to you that same annual results measure, that's the district, around the key performance indicators. Then I went in to look at the business and operation, it's student support, curriculum and instruction, and then student and community engagement. So those three departments are the three departments that are over all of our sub-departments. And so you will see that, oops, I cut the screen. You will see that each one of the big departments has that goal within their plan. So in BOSS, theirs is in order to achieve equality staff, business operations and support services will mutually develop key performance indicators for all employees. Curriculum and instruction, in order to achieve equality staff, one hundred percent of our sub-departments mutually develop key performance indicators for employees. And then student, community engagement, in order to achieve equality staff, one hundred percent of departments and sub-departments mutually develop key performance indicators for employees.
Now, as the leadership team, during our leadership retreat, we spent a half a day on key performance indicators. What are they? How do you develop them? How do you operationalize them? How do you monitor in real time through a data dashboard that we're actually doing the work that's having the intended effect so we can make adjustments in real time? And how do you make that dashboard public? So for example, as you go into technology, you see the monitor with all of the data that are being monitored. Make sure the things you say we're doing are the things we're actually doing. So I'm just saying that to say that because this was an annual result measure that the board approved, that not only is it cascading through the big departments, and Shannon will continue to minute and show it's cascading down to the sub-departments in each campus, but at the leadership levels in organization, we realized that in order to accomplish this, we got to train our people. We got to put structures and systems in place, and then we got to deploy it and monitor it. So that's already happened.
So as a sub-department of BOSS is technology. And so you'll see that this is technologies on the fourth row, technology specific in their plan that addresses key performance indicators, as well as assessment department under curriculum and instruction, and then marcom under student community engagement. And so all three of those have a goal specific in their specific plan that addresses key performance indicators. And then lastly, I took one campus, just for sake of space on the chart, and just put, at East Central High Schools, what their specific goal is that addresses key performance indicators. And so as you can see, starting from the board goal all the way down to the campus throughout the organization, this one goal, how it cascades throughout all of our plans and our work.
So the next slide, you'll see a document that's very familiar to you, and that's our correlation chart. It's a little different this year because last year, we incorporated community-based accountability pillars, but we realized that that needs to drive our improvement process. Because what the community says it expects from our school system is what should drive every, be the focal point of every decision that we make. So the community-based accountability system priorities are on the left. That's the backbone of our CG process. And then you can see that we also did a crosswalk between some other improvement models that we've incorporated in our school district. One is Robert Harzal's High Reliability Schools Framework. And the other is the Effective Schools Framework, which Texas Education Agency has implemented as a school frame as improvement for school improvement, school system improvement. So when you look at their levers, which is what they call, now you can see that when you look at the community-based accountability system, when you look at engage well-rounded students, student safety and wellbeing, for example, that matches level one for high reliability schools, safe, supportive, and collaborative cultures. It matches lever three in the Effective Schools Framework for positive school climate. And here in our district, we'd always had culture and climate as a focal point for improvement in our previous models for improvement. And so when you do that crosswalk, you can see that all of that falls under priority one. So the reason that we put this correlation chart together is to show that we don't use each and every one of these frameworks the way that previously we might have used because what it would have required was us going through a continuous improvement or planning process for the higher reliability schools model of creating all this work, templates, frameworks, goals, and then do the same thing for the Effective Schools Framework, turn it into TDA, and do the same thing internally and do the same work three times as opposed to streamlining, which is what the CG process is all about. Just wanted to show that we didn't make this up. This comes from research-based improvement models for schools and school systems.
So are those relationships a very tightly coupled relationship? Or are those kind of sort of almost nearly is, matches that?
So they're pretty tightly coupled, but our default essentially is what are the key questions through our community-based accountability system? And so in many cases, the key questions are more comprehensive and inclusive than some of these other models. So the models are incorporated within our CBAS, which is why we realized we had to make CBAS the backbone because we left some things out that showed up in CBAS because we, we were using CBAS as one of the frameworks as opposed to the framework. Yes, sir.
So we've made, based on that work, we've made some changes to our, I think this is probably the biggest change we made to our CG process, is our reporting of our scorecards.
So Shannon, if you would go back a couple of, I just want to tease this up a little bit. One more? So when you read that at face value, it almost looks like a lot of copy paste. Well, here's, so yeah, so what we want to do is show that now that, now that we've expected their goals to be cascaded, we're saying that not only is the district working on key performance indicators, but every single department, every single sub-department, and every single campus is doing that work. But how do we know?
Yeah, basically.
So how do we know, right? So this is a piece that Shannon's going to show is that we've, we had previously started to generate scorecards and trackers and that sort of thing. And our intent was ultimately to bring a version of that to the board every quarter and report to the board the progress that we're making, but we realized that that is not enough. That we, we've got to, before we get to informing the board, we've got to have mechanisms for informing ourselves so we're actually making adjustments along the way so that we're not waiting to report to the board to determine our next steps. That we're making changes along the way so that we can move and report to the board. We can say, here's where we're at. However, here's the changes we've, we've already made. And that's what I've heard from the board the last seven years is we appreciate you telling us, here's some areas of opportunity, but what we really want to know is, what are you doing about it? And even better, it'd be greater if you just didn't bring it to us and say, we're going to do this. But here's where we're at, and this is what we've already done differently to make sure that we're impacting this going forward. So, so that's kind of why we've made some adjustments to our scoreboards, our scorecards we're going to share with you now. So we have internal and external to make sure that we're, it's all visible. Our work, its impact is visible in real time technically inside the organization and publicly outside the organization in a way that speaks to our understanding and informs our work. So something that John and many of you have shared in recent years is, listen, all this edgy speak, these acronyms, all this, like, this means nothing to us because internally it means a lot, but externally it doesn't tell the story. Like, tell us what the, what does this mean? Are you getting this done or not? And if you're not, what are you doing about it? But internally, that's what drives our work, that edgy speak, those acronyms. So that also has informed now why we have a new kind of accounting and recording that we think is going to make sure we all know what we intend to do and agree to which we're doing it and what are we doing about it.
So the first scorecard I'm going to show you is the external. And so on this document, when you look at the external scorecard, you read it from the left, right? So because it is about our community, it's grounded in our community-based accountability system, and it's reporting to what degree and how are we meeting those pillars. And so this is, what I'm going to show you is the district scorecard, so it has everybody on it. So if you look at it on the left-hand side, the first column is the pillars, and they're just by numbers. So pillar one, and so if we go, if we go back, so you can see like pillar one is around engaged, well-rounded student. So, and these are the key questions. And so it's color-coded to show and align with the pillars. So all of pillar, the first four pillars are all with under priority one. So they're all color-coded a yellowish color so that we can align it to the four EC priorities as well. And so they just go in varying degrees of color. And then it tells you the key questions that it's aligned to and then the EC priority that it's aligned to. Across the top, you have all the campuses and then the three big sub-departments for our district, BOSS, CIA, and STE. So I'm going to take you real quick just down to the bottom to show you the color coding so that you kind of understand the colors in the right. But as you can see, as you go through, you see all the different colors. So priority one ends at row fifteen. Then we get into priority two and the CBAS questions. So down at the bottom, what we've done now is just forecast is what we're calling it. So each campus and department has looked at these CBAS questions and said, okay, so based on our plan, based on our needs assessment, based on what we've created, what are the priorities for our work this year? And so if it's a light yellow, there's, I mean a light blue, they're saying they're going to maintain their work for this year. It's, it's, they're still re-engaging in it, but it's not going to be some major change or something that they're going to be creating a new system for. If it's a dark, darker blue, they're going to maintain, but they're considering a change, whether it be sometime this year or maybe for the next year, so they're kind of teeing up for something that might happen. If it's a green color, it's going to be a minor change. Something's going to happen. They're going to tweak something, they're going to change something this year. And if it's orange, it's a major change. It's an overhaul of a system or something that they're doing, or they're implementing a brand-new strategy of some sort that they'll be implementing this year to, for that specific key question. So now it kind of gives context to the colors. So again, the light blue is something that they're maintaining, all the way to orange is a major change. So you can look across one point one for pillar one to see two schools and three schools are teeing up to have a major change. Two of them are doing a minor. And then several of them are just going to maintain what they have in our areas. So that's kind of how you read it going down. I have, so then, what does that mean? How do we know? So I took a specific example. So we're going to look at Legacy first. And their key question, to what degree do we support student learning and progress? Legacy is indicated in orange. They're going to do a major change. And so I went into their plan and listed out, what are some of those strategies that they're going to be doing that are changed, that are different? So here are some things that they listed specifically and they put specifically in their improvement plan that shows strategies that they're going to be implementing this year that are aligned to this big orange change. So they're designing and providing feedback on lesson plans. They're going to focus on clearly aligned lesson targets. CFAs, Common Formative Assessments, that's something where teachers create common assessments and give them to students and get feedback, is something that they are really working on implementing this year. They dabbled in a little bit last year, but this year is a big, it's a big change for them. So I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of, if you, if you look at where this signaling is, then if you go down to their plan, there are specific strategies. Now, if they're blue, there may not be something in there. They're just going to maintain. So they may not have put a specific strategy in there for this year. But if there's orange, we should see several strategies, at least one big to several, that will be indicating their work.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm trying to click on this highlighted district external, what you just showed us.
Yeah.
And it doesn't open. For future reference, is it supposed to open on the board book?
Oh, I don't, I think they probably uploaded it as a PDF.
Right, it's a PDF.
So I can give you a copy. I mean, we can just send you a copy of this PowerPoint.
No, that's a good point. Well, I think, I think we uploaded it in a board book in PDF. But what we should probably do is email you and interact, if it's going to be interactive, email it to you. So during the meeting, you can follow the link because I can't follow any of it. I was like, man, I can open the link because it's in PDF.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to look at it.
Wonder if we can upload it. Yeah, it has a Google app too. Yes, so we'll, we can work on that.
Okay.
We'll send the same presentation to the board so you can have.
I'll do it right now.
Sorry about that.
I can do it right now. I thought it was just me.
No.
No, it's a PDF. You're stuck too.
It is probably.
So one other thing that I want to point out then is when you look at that, if you take each individual campus or department and go top-down, you can see if there's any patterns or trends or opportunities as it relates to that particular campus or that particular department with regard to the key questions and priorities. Right? Like where are the opportunities at? Where should most of their work be focused on this year? And then as a system, you can look at any one of those priorities or individual down to the key question and look at the pattern across. If there's a lot of blue and green, we're probably doing pretty good as a system. If there's a lot of orange in one particular key question, that's probably where we should be spending a lot of our time this year. The idea is, there's a hundred priorities, but we can't do everything well, right? A huge guards all fronts guards done. So part of the CG process of last year has been, how can we get to the priorities of the priorities so we can make a real change that's noticeable and not try to do everything at one time? So this is the tool that, that indicates where that focus should be and should generate questions, right? So the board should look at that and go, well, hmm, tell me a little bit more about what Old Crest is doing about. And then we should be able to unpack it in the plan, right? Or we might look at the plan and go, wow, they're actually not doing anything about that. And that's an orange. It's supposed to be a major change. We need to get to Old Crest, see what they're going to do about that and provide some support because you can't say we need a major change and we're not doing anything to change. So it just, it's intended to give a nice snapshot to look at patterns and relationships and generate more questions. That, that's, that's the hope. Generate questions internally and externally. That's an external scorecard.
So then, this is just the forecasting, say, what do we plan on? The campus has actually forecasted for the next three years. So on theirs, it has the yearly for the next three years, and they get different colors. So it might be light blue this year, it might be maybe dark blue next year, and it could turn to orange. Or it could be light blue the next three years because it's not a priority for the next three years or on something else.
Did that make sense, what you just said?
So they forecasted the three years out. So these colors are just for this current school year.
So you, we have, we have a forecast, every campus and department has done, and basically, well, it might be blue saying that we're not going to do anything about it, but we might look at it a little bit. It sounds like it's pretty important stuff. Well, then when you drill down to each campus, you might see that because they have so many things to focus on and right now, this is the most important, but that one is. But that one is important, we're gonna maintain for now. But the year after next, we plan on that being a focus after we fix these areas, right? So they're not just planning for the here and now. They're planning, choreographing, moving the pieces of the puzzle around in terms of prioritizing effort over the course of three to five years. So we're also trying to help them see through this process that you gotta have short-term goals and long-term goals. And while you focus on something short-term, doesn't mean these other areas of opportunity, you just forget about them. You gotta have it on the radar, in the plan, on the horizon. Um and, and then it begins to paint a context about why it's okay, I can let this go for now. So I can focus on this, because we're gonna get back to that in a year or two. Because that's another problem that we all have is, it's hard to let things go because you know everything's important. But as long as you can let it go and put it in that extra bucket, then you feel like, okay, I can let it go because I'm not just casting it aside internally saying it doesn't matter. Um so it just helps everybody organize their minds around the work we're doing now and why, this is why we're focusing on this now. And here's the work we're gonna be doing in the near longer term. And now we can see the whole puzzle coming together.
So this last thing I wanna share about this is how do we, how will we bring you updates? And so the colors won't change for the year, their focus will maintain the same, but each quarter they'll signal to us what, where's their progress for each one of these. And that's down, it's up here on the left-hand side. So if they're on track, they said they're, they were, it made an orange, they had those strategies that I showed you in their plan, then they'll signal, are they on track in meeting the progress in making their plan? So they'll put OT on top of their color. So let's say, I'm gonna signal for this one, I'm just typing in OT. And then I'll know, okay, that specific campus harmony is on track to meet that goal for, by the end of the year. So each one of them will go in each quarter and they'll um update where they are on their progress with the um key below. So they'll, if, if they have to make some adjustments um to their plan, then they'll put an A. If they need some support um from a department, from others, then they'll put SR. Um if they're, if they're in crisis, like they're not even close to making the goal, they're off track, something's not working, they'll put C. So it'll signal to us and to you all about where they are in their progress towards that goal. Then the internal scorecard is very similar to what you saw before. This has all the edgy speak on it, so this gets kind of down into the weeds of, of their work. It's broken up very similarly to what you've seen in the past, where you have your priority one. Um and then they'll list their, their goals here, their major result measures, and then their strategies. Now, the only thing that's, the big thing that's different from this to what you saw last year is we're going to have them color and change the colors. Uh remember it was red, yellow, green, or white if they didn't, hadn't, hadn't um started it yet? They'll keep doing those colors. Last year we just had them change them each quarter, this year we'll be able to see their progression. So um if, for example, on this first one, fidelity of implementation of district system, they'll go in here and they'll change the color of quarter one to either red if they're not on track, green if they're on track, yellow if they're making progress, or white if they haven't started that progress, haven't started that um, that work yet.
The colors.
Yes.
Hey, I'm not a big fan of color, but that's fine, you have to indicate it somewhere, okay? And, and that's my problem. But it looks like these things are supposed to be tied together, but you're using different colors here. And I will tell you that from an external perspective, not within a school system. Green means good, it doesn't mean you got a problem and you need to do something. Red does mean bad, and amber does mean what y'all have guided on here. But it seems like if this is externally focused, unless people read and pay attention to the color coding, that first slide you showed us looks like, hey, now everything's gray here, 'cause you got an awful lot of gray. And I'm gonna focus on the things that aren't gray, because outside of the school system, gray means good. Everything else means you need to look at. So the difference in the colors between this one and the other one bothered me a little bit. And the colors that were used on that other one bothered me a little bit. But only if this is designed to be an external document for people to look at. If it's all internal, then y'all use whatever colors case you want.
So this one is internal.
Okay.
The other one is external, so we, we may wanna revisit the conversation about the color combination.
Think about it.
Yeah, we aligned it to be a CBA national colors, that's what they did for the.
Yeah, so when you think about driving down the screen, if I see green, that's good. Go, if I see amber, something's fixing to change, but I gotta go right there, so it doesn't hurt the green, okay? Yeah, that's what the old stocks.
We can look at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Maybe I thought the same thing, but I, I see all the green, I'm like, hey, that's a good way.
Yeah, where's the shade?
Yeah, where are you gonna say?
No, no, it's about. And thank y'all for that.
Absolutely.
All right, so big goals for the year, kind of bringing to the close here. Um we, we definitely talked a lot about our remote learning system. You guys at a previous special meeting got a little tour of what it was going to look like. We've now got teachers who have built those out and we wanted to kind of show you a couple of examples, at least one, and however many more you would like to add or that. Here's an algebra class, if you have an eighth-grade student who has Miss White for fifth period and then gets to fifth period in their day, this is what their class is gonna look like. So we wanted to give you a tour of that and show you a little bit of more realistic view of what our remote learning system's gonna be experienced like for kids and parents, okay?
So the template is the same for every class. So what you, what you see and what I take you through as far as the tabs, that's uniforms for everybody. What's different are the assignments, the things they upload. So when you get into a class, um this is what you'll see, this is kind of the dashboard, if you will. At the top, um super cute, they've all made them their own. I mean, they have everything from their bit emoji, this is, this is Miss White's bitmo, bit emoji, which is like her, her avatar of herself. But they all have their own personality that they put in that little area. If you go down to the front page, this is where all the teachers have put um like announcements, if you will, the things that students need. So all they put like first-day instructions, um screenshots for things that they might need, um the, their daily schedule, so what am I gonna do? So if I click on the daily schedule, um all of them put like, as a student, what is my daily schedule going to be? So all the students for each of their individual um campuses will have their own daily schedule for their specific class. And it's in reach, so it's right there. It'll tell them um if, what their remote schedule is, if they're doing asynchronous or synchronous time, so students know when to click on and log on to get their live instruction or um what their asynchronous uh assignments might be. So that's there. And then they put like, some things like, if they have a remind or an app or some other two-way communication that they'll be using, they put the directions for that there so that they did. I saw in some classrooms, they put a little video introducing themselves. So they might have um put a little, a student could click on it, it's like a two-minute video, so that if they hadn't met them yet, that they see them, hear their voice, and um kind of get some instructions from their teacher. So a lot of them uploaded a little video there. Some of them put their meet-the-teacher link there. So if they had a meet-the-teacher and they recorded it, they might have put that link there. So there's all sorts of things on this front page for different people. Then at the top, so this is kind of what we call the stream or reminders, classwork. So once you click on the classwork, this is where the teacher will put their actual work, like the links that they will need, their assignments, their slide decks for their instruction. All of that will be under the classwork tab. So you can see here that in Miss White's, she has um like a couple different categories. So resources, again, she put her daily schedule. She also put a link to her actual website there, which a lot of teachers have done, because their website has some other resources that they might be able to use. So they just can click there and go to their website instead of having to get out, go into the e-central website, find it. Um the, she put her unit organizer, which is her visual for um for what they're gonna be learning this unit. So basically, they're gonna be doing um solving equations for her first unit, specifically linear equations. And this is what they're gonna be using. She put everything from the vocabulary to her different days, all of that's there for her students. So they have a big picture of what unit and everything that they're gonna be learning through that first unit. Um a lot of these are, are live links, so it'll take them to, to different resources as she works with them. And then you get into the assignments. She has a little introduction. So day one, I wanna say the first one. Like, if you get into it, it'll tell you a little bit about um her success starter. She's gonna talk to them about how they're gonna do some self-ratings on their use of Google Classroom. She has an exit ticket. Um then she's got a little assignment for them for the birthday where she wants them to tap, she wants to learn about her students. So she set up a series of things for them to tell them about her. They can upload a picture, they can make her a little video they can watch. She has all sorts of little things so that she can get to know her students. Now, if they're, especially those that are asynchronous and she might not see them face-to-face and learn to do them, um she has that built in. So she has that, there's a, um and then she goes down to day one. So then she gets into some other um lessons. Uh I think she's getting into vocabulary, like how will they tell her if they're getting it or not getting it, um or having trouble with her lesson, that kind of thing. And then you can see her people, she can see the people who are in her class. I'm not really a teacher here, I just, I'm just visiting. Um but here are her students that are already set up in her class, so they can see who, their, their other students can see um who's in there. She can also invite guardians or parents, um and so she can see who's been, who is a teacher. I can see who's gotten into my classroom, basically, which, which parents and which students have already connected. If I have a student on my roster who has, is not on my list, I know that I haven't connected them yet. So that's a student I've gotta reach out, call, and figure out why they haven't connected to my Google Classroom yet. So she'll be able to monitor that really, really easily by period. And then there's a green tab, which is like, has it done anything yet? So it's kind of a, kind of an overview of what you'll see. Um the stream, they typically update all the time, I mean, as, as things come up or if they have announcements or reminders, they'll put them in the stream. And then each day, um before the beginning of the day, we've asked they upload their assignments for that day. So they may not upload it for the whole week, 'cause they are, some, some are a little bit concerned about students feeling overwhelmed and/or uh it being, knowing where to navigate. And so they, a lot, several teachers have talked about just uploading a day at a time that morning. So when students get into their work that day, they see what's there.
So a few things. When it's time for the teacher to actually teach live, the link will be right there. Their schedule shows at nine-thirty, I'm going to algebra. Nine-thirty, I virtually walk to my classroom, they go sit my butt down after the tardy bell, and I click on the link, and she's there along with all of her classmates in a Google meeting. And she'll provide instruction for those that are there synchronous. What we also learned in spring is that there were a lot of teachers across the district who had always organized their class through Google Classroom. And there were many students across our system, from elementary through high school, who had used Google Classroom. My child was one of them. And when I look at this the first time, I'm like, I don't even know where to begin. And he goes, all you gotta do is this, that, this, and this, and this. Students who had had experience with Google Classroom and teachers who had had experience with Google Classroom had no problem with videos. Fast forward four months to today, now everybody has had experience with it. So some of the anxiety that parents are feeling, that I once felt, is not the anxiety that your students feel. And even those that still have a little bit of anxiety, I promise you, by the time they get through that first or second day, it's gonna be all packed. And they're gonna be able to navigate all of this, they're gonna be able to put their assignments in there, they're gonna be able to have individual tutorials and small group instruction from their teacher. They're gonna be able to interact with their classmates, they're gonna be able to interact electronically with their teacher and get grades and feedback as, I mean, seamless, trust me. And so that's one of the things we're trying to encourage parents about is, our frame of reference is go my butt after every bell to my next class and sit down and let my teacher lecture me and give me my assignments. I don't give all this. Our kids and our staff really quickly, if they don't already, they give this unbelievably smoothly. Shopingly smoothly. I had no idea my child knew how to do this in March when we shut down, I had no idea. In fact, I, his teachers invited me to their classes and I didn't even know what the heck I was doing. And he showed me how to do them in five minutes, and it's super simple. So that's one thing that we're trying to, again, reinforce to parents, and then I've reinforced on Facebook Live. Just relax, that first day, your teacher's number-one job is to help you connect, take therapy. If you're still struggling before Monday, 'cause you tried the links and it didn't make sense and you weren't sure how to get on and nobody's contacting me, on Monday, they will reach out to you if you have not logged in and they will work through the day as long as it takes. We will work through the day as long as it takes, even if we gotta drive to your house to get you squared away. It's gonna happen. And once you're squared away, you work your way through your daily schedule or you work your way through a combination of synchronous and asynchronous, if that's what you and your family choose, you're gonna see how that routine is not so bad. In a non-virtual world, Monday is extremely stressful for every teacher and student. It just is. And then you show up and by the end of that first day, everybody's in a groove. Okay, I, I, I know where my classes are, I know how the schedule's gonna work. I know I went from middle school to high school and I was scared to death, it's not so bad. I see my friends, I have some of my friends in my classes. And then teachers are like, oh, my kids aren't so bad, I don't have two thousand kids like I thought I was gonna have. They don't all have horns and pitchforks, they're pretty good. Uh and everybody settles down after that first day. Same thing's gonna happen in this remote learning environment. And quite honestly, Facebook Lives, Brandon's right there, we went from almost seven hundred viewers at any point in time to less than two hundred yesterday. So folks are feeling increasingly comfortable that, okay, I understand. My teachers did call me, I did connect from my campus, I did get my technology and my, my sample schedule. I know who to contact, they are gonna have help desk set up. They're not gonna let me talk in between the cracks on Monday if I don't know how to do it. They, they can invite me as a parent and I can see and monitor my kid's progress every day and get notification. Okay, I feel good. So the, going from seven hundred in a few weeks to, I mean, and the type of questions, they're not asking as many of the same type, I think they, they, they feel more comfortable that they understand the plan, they know how to access the plan, they know where to go if they don't, if they're having problems. Um and the same thing for STEM. So uh it's still gonna be stressful that first day, people are just struggling to sneak this weekend, but they will anyway. Uh in the, completely first-day school. And after that first few days, I think we're gonna be pretty, pretty school sailing and we'll make some adjustments. Those first few days made some things we didn't anticipate. And in a few short weeks, I think we'll be able to, to provide remote instruction all year long in a high-quality way for those that choose that for the year. Uh and sooner than later, we'll get people face-to-face and get on with getting on. And hopefully in a year, uh we'll see some new opportunities in blended learning environments that maybe weren't, weren't available to us before this pandemic. That could be really useful for individual families and their kids.
So I wanted to back up one step just to give you an idea. So that was a student's view where they get into that one teacher's classroom. But as I'm a student, I log into my Google Classroom. If I'm an elementary student, this is mine, so I have access to a lot of classrooms. But this is how I access, I get into my Google Classroom. And if I'm a second-grade student, I will just have one classroom in there, like Mr. Hader's classroom. That's it, it'll just show that, I'll click on that and I'll get in there. If I'm, as, if I'm a secondary student, I potentially will have seven or eight different classrooms, like this. So my dashboard will show this, and they'll all show like fifth period. So I'll have my first period, my second period, my third period, my fourth period, my fifth period, my sixth period, my seventh period. So when it's fifth-period time, I just click on fifth period. And that takes me into the view that you saw before, and here I am in my classroom. So I wanted to kind of give you an idea of how does a student access their day and see all their periods to how they get into that one period. So it's super simple, it's a simple, it's a simple click, and they have a dashboard with all of their classes together. So elementary, it's just one, I get into Mr. Hader's classroom, and I'm here. And everything, all English, science, math, social studies is all in this one classroom. That help? Kind of give you an idea?
Thanks for that.
Can we, on, on that third slide there, where it says the period, eighth, eighth algebra?
Yep.
So that, right there, if you have one through whatever, is that where that's gonna, all those classes? Ability to click on first, again, third, fourth, fifth period?
Yep, so like this first one. Mm-hmm, so this first one, while this is fourth grade, Ms. Harris, this might say first period. And I click on my first period. And then this one might be say second period, and I click on my second period. And then this one would say third period, then fourth period. And then this one would say third period, then fourth period, fifth period, sixth period.
So it'll look different for people with all those classes?
Yep, for all those classes, they'll have all of these, but their titles will be their period classes, much like fifth period does.
Yeah, so the elementary kid will have literally just one class.
Now, they might have two in, like, sometimes in third grade up, they have two different teachers. They might have like ELAR and, and social studies and math, science, so they might have two classes.
Is there a way we can, like, a, a link where we can look at this up close on our own, or would that be their logging into someone's classroom? Is this just a demo, or is this literally someone's setup?
You, you have to get into their classroom, to their actual classroom. We have a new program called Little Sis, and I have access to every single classroom in the whole district. And it's just a click of the button, I just go in, they don't know I'm necessarily in there, or they could, but I can just get in and look, just like I showed you, Miss, that's Miss White's actual class. This is Miss Taha's actual class, I can get in and look to see, so that the principals can get in and look. I'm happy to sit down with you, and we could sit down, and I can show you, and take you through different ones.
I would like to, because I have, you know, several parents and, and my family as well, and I'm sure everyone else who experiences. And I'd like to be able to speak to it.
Yep.
I mean, I've, I've gotten a great view here, but if I'm able to actually see it up close, then when I get questions, I can be like, oh no, you know, this is whatever, because we do get it a lot, you know, I mean, I do. And so I'd like to be able to really speak to it accurately.
Sure.
So yeah, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions about this, sir?
My, my concern is on the virtual learning, is how are we going to verify that the kids are actually learning what they're being taught?
So it'll be just like they would when they're in classroom, and that is through monitoring their, what their, their assignments, what they're doing through their interaction. It could be that we have discussion, it could be through an assignment that you turn in, but they have to still meet the standards of the objectives that they're being taught. So they have to still be able to demonstrate their learning.
How are they going to do that?
So multiple ways. It could be through discussion.
Does a teacher physically see the student doing their work when they're, when they're having their class? Or could an older student, older student that is watching the kid because both parents or have to work, doing their work, and saying, I don't want to put up with you, I'm not going to do this, I'll do your work because I've already done it, and it looks like little Johnny's got an age, age average, and really has nothing to say.
That's a, that's a great point, Mr. Massino, because when I was in school at East Central, half the kids would sit in the cafeteria at breakfast and find each other's work.
Exactly.
So the reality of this, we've been shifting away from really heavily weighting class assignments and practice in grades, because anybody can copy from anybody, and anybody can Google it, it's practice. But an authentic assessment, you can't cheat. So if you have to actually perform, or demonstrate, or exhibit, your mom and dad can't do it for you. Now, if you say, hey, turn in this awesome poster project on Monday, and mom and dad did it for the kid over the weekend, and turn it in on Monday, and the kid gets 100, that's an old traditional model that had no integrity. We used to think it did, but we know it doesn't. But if on Monday, the kid has to stand in front of the parents and classmates, and perform, and exhibit an understanding of that historical whatever, and then show what they built to demonstrate whatever, that's an authentic assessment, and that's where most of their grades should come from. So in this environment too, what we're really impressing upon our teachers is, if a kid can Google it, you're wasting your time. If the assignment you're giving a kid is Google-able, why would they even know your parents or big brother, first of all? I can Google it and give it five minutes, which in the spring, I can tell you, some of the assignments that were put on choice boards, kids could Google the exact answer somewhere in the world, and copy paste it in the Google Classroom and be done with algebra in three minutes, because I had one to do it. And I said, no, you did not finish that assignment in three minutes. And he comes down with the assignment, and then I would make him show me, and he didn't know how to do it, but he showed me where he got it. So my feedback to principals and teachers has been, if it's Google-able, it's a waste of your time. So there can be practice activities in there that are Google-able, but they're not going to be weighted in the grade. They're just for you to make sure you know how to do it. But these are the things, these summative performances, exhibitions, demonstrations, you actually do something with this knowledge, and we see you do it. Not mom and dad, not big brother and sister. That's where your grades come from. That should have hap, that should, that has begun to be happening in our system through authentic assessments, which is what this is called. When we were face to face, it's going to continue as we're virtual, because the dawn of the day is when we evaluate student success based on what mom, dad, big brother, and sister did, or their buddies did for them in the cafeteria. That's a waste of everybody's time, particularly since knowledge doesn't come from books, and information doesn't come from books. And I'm not saying good knowledge comes from Google, but you can find just about everything in the world that we used to only get from an adult's head that's smarter than us, or a book in a library. It exists point click in seconds, and so that is, that is only information. What you do with that information is what we should be doing in school. And should, what we should have always been doing, but it's what we have to do today, or we're irrelevant.
So what you're saying is that there is some physical or visual involvement from the teachers with every student, every day in these classes?
Has to be. So for example, let's say a kid is asynchronous, meaning that he's, the teacher never sees him. Well, his evidence of learning might be something he produced in a video format where he is actually articulating what he has learned and showing what he is able to do as a result. Now, mom and dad, big brother and sister might help him do this, but in the video where he's actually explaining his understanding that he submitted to the teacher, the teacher's evaluating his words, his products, his explanation, his speech, his, you see what I'm saying? Like, that, that carries more merit than some har, some piece of paper that he attached to Google Classroom and submitted that couldn't be Googled or done by a friend or brother and sister, right? So even the asynchronous work, in order for the teacher to evaluate their progress, is going to have to be authentic. And that's a, that's, that has to be designed by, by our teachers. They can't, they can't just copy paste in assignments that students can respond to that can, can be inauthentic, and expect that to be weighted heavily in the grade. Because the teacher's responsibility is to, is to, is to report how well a student has mastered or progressed in the learning standards, and they have to rely on the most valid evidence to do that. And they know that worksheets, multiple choice things that they could have done with nobody looking are invalid. With respect to the things we're talking about here. But most valid are the things that they actually do, like
They apply it to something else.
Yeah, if you put it in context of a, a pace race, nobody cares what you do in the shop. What matters is what shows up on that track that day, and that's the evaluation of how effective that team was in their design, in their JBA, in their construction, in their practice, in their data monitoring, and the adjustments they made. You could give a bunch of assignments, a work, you know, a bunch of worksheets on those things, give them 100 before they ever got on the track, and then they, they can't turn three laps. So the, the authentic assessment is the actual performance. All that other stuff matters, but that shouldn't influence the grade. It's about the actual application of all of these things in something meaningful. So that's a lot said, and it's very philosophical in terms of our role as educators, but in the world we live in today, I mean, we're, we're, we're a generation removed from having a school system that really evaluates student learning based on authentic, application-based outcomes. We're a generation removed, if not two. But today, we're absolutely irrelevant, and we're not known. Because open source learning exists. I can go, I can, I can go get a degree from Harvard right now, although they won't give you the paper, but I can take every course at MIT or Harvard I want, open source. I can Google facts and information and data, all that. I don't need a, a stage on, a, a stage on stage who's brilliant preaching all this stuff to you. I need people that can help facilitate my understanding of that and do something that adds value. So to your point, grades have to reflect my ability as a student to take this content and do something productive with it. That evidence of producing something that matters is what their grade is represented by. Not because I brought tissue paper on time, that I get extra credit, not because I did a fancy poster that mom and dad could have done for me, not because I never missed a day of school, but because I am doing stuff with this content that is demonstrating, exhibiting, performing, proving that I can use this stuff to write better, I can use this stuff to communicate better, I can use this stuff to, to fix stuff, to make stuff, to produce stuff.
And we've created proficiency skills, what we call proficiency skills, and they're for all of the important, the major standards, and they outline what Mr. Tishkana just said right there. So if I'm on a level, it'll tell me through levels where I am in that standard. And if I am just able to, if it's a rote memorization or something, just unable to just say that, very low on the, on the proficiency scale. If I'm able to do, demonstrate, apply to something else, it's higher on the proficiency scale. So our teachers have that tool by standard to also, and so do students, to also help them gauge where students are in their learning.
Yeah, so the teacher's evidence, if all they can do is give the assignments that kids just can regurgitate, they can never give a kid a grade higher than a, a two, because that's the only opportunities they provide to the kid, so that's shame on the teacher. Right? Like, you gotta give a kid the opportunity to demonstrate, you know, at four or five, which the proficiency skill is going to say, this is what the kid's going to have to be able to do. Kid's going to have to be able to do these things. It doesn't say kid's going to have to complete these worksheets all the time. It says the kids are going to have to do these things, so where's the evidence? Before you give that kid that grade, I want to see John's little portfolio of coactivity that matches these indicators on the proficiency scale. And that's different. And that's, that's, teachers are, we're struggling with that, because it's a shift, it's a significant shift. They have to be, have to be a designer of experiences to create assessments that matter.
And just to dig that on, if, if, if a, a big brother or a parent is monitoring that student's lesson, I, I don't think there's nothing wrong with that parent, a big brother, not doing it right.
Okay.
You know, because he's monitoring the classroom also, and it's, it's same, the kid did homework, homework, the parents can do their homework, you know? So I think it's, it's a trustworthy situation. Anyway, I think kids these days trust the teacher more than they trust the parents. Because my, uh, uh, wife is a math teacher, she'll tell the kid, my granddaughter, if she won't go, they're going to bring the, the teacher to her. So you know
Isn't that true?
Yeah, they do, you know, they trust, they, they trust it. They trust the teacher.
I understand that. I mean, I know, I know, going home and doing the work, but you still got to go back to school the next day, and whether the teacher will know whether you did it or not, would you go back to school the next day? And we're, we're talking about not seeing the kid for nine weeks, seven weeks. So that's, that's the difference there.
Yeah, okay. I got your point there. Let me ask you a question too about, uh, PE teachers, uh, virtual. How is a PE teacher going to get a lesson, uh, then how do you?
So one of two ways. So one, they're going to input their slot, their, their link, the slides into the elementary slide deck. So it'll say PE on it, with a link, and, and or a video, and that student will click, and then during their PE time, be in the gym virtually with that teacher. Or there'll be a video, if I'm doing asynchronous, that I'll follow along and do my activity with the PE teacher. Or they might have a separate Google Classroom that says sixth period, PE, and then just like we had with algebra, they'll have their own PE Google Classroom.
Okay.
All new.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, she's going to be sitting, she's going to be sitting in front of a computer monitor, all right, we got to do ten burpees.
That's right. That's right. We have a soccer player, and she's working out in the living room in the air conditioner. I'm like, what are you doing?
I can do that!
Coach Gallas, coach.
Listen, don't make fun. At the morning, at 5:15, I get on with a trainer in my living room on the computer and do what they tell me to do. And, and then watch me and give you feedback. Straighten your legs, bend your back, you know, so, yeah, it's amazing now.
So what we're basically talking about here is, is forced blended learning. It's forcing us into this environment where we can create conditions where kids are learning in a combination of face to face, virtual modalities, and they have choice about the pace at which they learn, the way to which they learn, and the different ways they engage in content, and the different ways in which they demonstrate they know, to the point John was, was saying is, sometimes in a traditional model, everybody has to turn this assignment in on this day, or take this test in this way to prove you know it. But in the real world, here's, here's, here's the end goal. You have to do this. Now, you get to choose who you work with, what resources you use on the project, you negotiate the timeline, but ultimately, you demonstrate you got the job done. And that's kind of what the theory of blended learning is all about, and the, and the piece that was always missing, which is why we wrote a grant and were awarded this grant this year, because we wanted some support around, was the virtual piece. Right? And now, huh, that's all we are. So in one way, it's accelerating our rating, which we're going to be a school system that can offer blended modes of instruction. So the idea is that even when kids are all in school, it should not be led, learning should not be led by the teacher. Right? At some point, kids need to manage their experience and the way in which they engage in content, and the way that they prove they learned it, who they work with, and how they go about, you know, going through the learning process. So blended doesn't necessarily only mean, you know, kids are at home when they're learning virtually, they can learn virtually while in school as well. So, long story short, we just wanted to share that we did get that grant. We have three campuses that are getting a high level of support, the Raise Your Hand Texas, and other organizations reaching 20 that are going to support our implementation of blended learning. But as a result of the pandemic and us starting remotely, we feel like we're going to be able to apply some of these things we're learning across other classrooms and other grade levels and other schools in our system, over time, to improve experiences for kids. And skill sets of teachers. So I just wanted to share a little bit about blended learning today with you guys, so if you're aware of kind of what we're undertaking. I believe it's the Con Valley, Salado, and Sinclair that are formally piloting some blended learning support.
But everybody's piloting it.
But everybody's piloting it.
It's funny, because when we wrote this, you know, this wasn't, COVID-19 was not even a thought. And so we wanted to get into this experience and really move into this digital space and, and work, and, and now we're here. And so at one time, it was, it was a thought, and now everybody is actually engaging in it. So what I was going to show you is we are, we've adopted the model of station rotation. That's really the aspect of blended learning that we're really going to be focusing on this, uh, next year. And it's really built into our schedules. So all station rotation means is, I get a little mini lesson or something from my teacher, could be synchronous or asynchronous, then I go and do something with that work, or something that I learned, right? And then my teacher might be coming in and out in a small group to work with me, and to give me feedback and work. All of that is built in to our daily schedule now with remote learning. So it's very, it's a very natural, seamless transition for us, so pretty much everybody's going to be doing this. I wanted to give you a little bit, so in a synchronous rotation, what this means is I get online virtually for maybe 10 minutes with my teacher. We're going to be live, she's going to give me some information. Then I might get on, I might stay on, but I'm going to then do something independent in, or with a small group, and do some work. And then my teacher, again, might come around and do some checks and or give me some information, or just, maybe pull me in a small group and talk to me about something if I need some extra support. Asynchronously, very similar. I would get in and watch a video that's preloaded, or the lesson from the day before that they put in. I would do my independent thing, and then my teacher would be giving me feedback on the work and the information that I submit. So I wanted to give you, what does it potentially look like? We are implementing what's called playlists, to give students that choice. So let me see if I can make this bigger. So stu, our, our teachers from those campuses specifically have worked on what they're calling a playlist. So they list here what they must do. Students must log on and watch the video. Or they must log on and do something that they, that I'm required to do, whether it's a video, whether it's getting online via live. Then they must do that independent activity, or, or whatever it is that I'm having them do, or that little small group thing. Then outline some choice that they have. So then I have some choice that I can do per each little area that I'm working on. So a lot of times, they have up to, up to four different choices that they can choose. And then I have a little sample reflection for them to fill out, based on how did it go. So they've created for their units, these choice boards that they are going to put into their Google classrooms, so students know and can negotiate, what is it that I have to do, and then where do I have some choice, and what can I choose to do. So we had curriculum writers, teachers came in for about two weeks this summer. So we had curriculum writers, teachers came in for about two weeks this summer and created these choice boards for their students. So that's blended learning has been much easier to implement since we're having these situations. Blended situations. It's awesome.
The, the end result is just to give kids some agency, give kids some control over how they interact with the content that we're presenting. And it's not, it's not, um, only driven by the decisions and the preferences that teachers have for how this learning of this content or interaction with this content should happen. Because some kids are very artistic, some kids are musically inclined, some kids are, are very scientific and logical and sequential, and some kids are the opposite of that. And the reality of it is, again, we know what the content is they need to learn, we know it, it'd look like if they learned it, the kids have to have some control over how they go about experiencing and ultimately proving that they've learned it. And blended learning is all about trying to tap into the ways in which kids are smart and the ways in which kids, the different ways in which kids learn and give them the opportunity to experience content in those ways, not just a teacher's preferred way. Um, and there's a lot of research behind what that does for kids, all kids, when it comes to learning, particularly complex content. Um, so we'll be piloting, uh, in those three schools while we're piloting district by default, and we'll get a, a lot of support by experts in the area of blended learning. A big investment from Charles Butt and HEB, uh, to support this through Raise Your Hand Texas in the state. Um, Charles Butt feels like when kids learn this way over time, this is how they develop those competencies of critical thinking, problem solving, resilience, persistence, grit, technical competence, be lifelong learners. But it's learning in those ways that mimic the ways they're gonna have to learn in life and in the world. And blended learning creates those conditions more frequently than sit and rose, listen to the genius at the front of the room, push content into your brain while you memorize it short-term and spit it back out on the test and then forget it by blundering, right? And do nothing with it. We're all shaking our heads because that's how we navigate this school. So we're pretty excited about those possibilities. Again, the spirit of realizing education still serves a vital role in our democracy and in our communities, but we can't do it the way we've always done it or we're quickly going to be irrelevant and parents are gonna choose something different for their children. Uh, and the world of work for these kids is not the world of work that exists today and not the world of work that's gonna exist for tomorrow. They're gonna have to be very agile. They're gonna have to work with a wide range of people in a wide range of circumstances. And as technology replaces some of the work that was available to them, they're gonna have to adapt because of these core competencies they have, right? Not just foundational literacy skills, but these core competencies and these character attributes that they have, they're gonna be able to adapt and maneuver in this world of work and still be really valuable, uh, because they're not, they don't just have one skill, they have an entire skill set. Um, and that, that's what we have to produce or at least provide experiences for, for our kids. And we just believe that blended learning might be the path forward. Um, and it gives us the ability to be more than application-based, um, teaching and learning system. And ultimately, I just wanna share with faculty, welcome back, we, kids should be asking why? Why do I gotta know this? What is that useful? What purpose is this gonna serve? And if the best we got is so you can pass the class, so you don't get retained, or so you can pass the test, we are wasting our time. If, if what we're teaching them has no purpose or value towards producing something meaningful, they, they can, we, our, our kids should be pushing us, why, 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 why? Because if they're not limited, if they're not in the world asking why, 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 to include why this is on the internet and why this is probably fake news, then they're gonna be puppets in a world that is, uh, creating a facade that they're being led through as opposed to being consumers, critical consumers of information and using a wide range of information to make decisions, solve problems, create products and services of value, and ultimately be marketable as an employee in whatever sector, um, they choose or that even exist in the future. So that's, that's why I'm doing a lot of philosophical reading on a, on a soapbox, but I think we'd all agree that we've just gotta create the kinds of things we, we expect kids to be able to do that are useful for us as business owners and as a society, or the kind of things we've gotta mimic those conditions in our school experiences is interactive content as frequently as possible over years if they're with us, if we expect those profiles of a graduate to actually be realized. Because those are not foundational literacies. That's not reading, writing, math, arithmetic, right? That's a foundation, but these are real core competencies of critical thinking and problem solving and, um, um, you know, communication and character attributes of resilience and persistence and grit and, you know, empathy and these kinds of things that you can't measure on a paper pencil test or on a paper pencil task. Like they've got to demonstrate through their behaviors as they're interacting with content over time. We gotta teach those things to kids and they've gotta discover the things for themselves, those things for themselves as they're experiencing learning and proving that they're learning in our system. So pre-K for all, um, we did stand up the infrastructure for it. We did put a sliding scale tuition model. We did, um, offer four-year-old pre-K for everybody in our community and make it very affordable and accessible. We had numbers tracking, uh, in the hundred range, uh, on a sliding scale, which we knew we were shooting for around 200 that we felt were in our community, four-year-olds that didn't qualify for pre-K that maybe weren't in formal education environments and COVID-19 hit. And so not only did we see several of those folks decide that they, they weren't comfortable, uh, but we also saw some of our four-year-olds that qualified who are still kind of tentative right now about sending their kids to school when we have face-to-face options. And so for those reasons, we're still standing up pre-K for all. We waived tuition for the first semester. We'll revisit the tuition, uh, for the spring because we don't feel it's right to charge tuition if we're remote only. Uh, but we do plan on marketing, advertising, recruiting, um, you know, heavily in the spring for 21, 22 for pre-K for all, and do expect our numbers to be fantastic as they were trending to be this year before COVID-19. So it's still a big goal of ours and it's still a priority. Um, and, uh, you know, that's, that's just kinda currently where we are with our remote numbers. And, and what we're prepared to do and already beginning to do is where our pre-K counts are down, we're just reallocating that staff to different areas of our elementary campuses where there are needs. So we, we'll keep that staff at work in areas that we need to backfill. Um, but we get staff for what the numbers look like prior to COVID-19 and it's more than what we're anticipating we actually see. CASD is opening. Um, that was another example of tracking really good. We were shooting for 150 kids in this first cohort. Uh, recruitment was going fantastic and then the recruitment, peak of the recruitment season was going to be March April and May and COVID hit. Um, and so we saw some kids shift, um, all the recruitment efforts that we've done and they're still recruiting today, kind of flatline. Uh, we were gonna start between 60 and 70 students, I believe, in that first cohort, which looking at the other CAS schools, because it's a, it's an idea with no proof of concept, that first cohort of students in every, uh, CAS school, to my understanding, did not meet the enrollment cap. But then the year after that, you know, interest really, um, accelerated because of the experiences those kids had in the first cohort. But we did also fill our staff and this is the six teachers that we hired. Um, and we're pretty excited about them and their backgrounds and teaching experiences and their multiple certifications. Uh, these are people who all have backgrounds in both business and industry and in the sectors that we are focusing on in CAS, but they're also content certified and educators as well. So that's, they're kinda like, they're kinda like unicorns in many ways because they're multi-certified and they have private sector experience in most instances. And that's what we were going for. Um, they're not easy to find, but a school model like this is very appealing to a lot of folks in both the private sector and in education circles for all the reasons we've been talking about today. It is legit alignment to the economy and kids are going to come out of this experience actually having marketable skills, certifications, credentials, and experiences in high-demand sectors. And so people get behind that, parents get really excited about that. But again, this first cohort, uh, is smaller for all things COVID and for all things, it's unknown. I don't know what, what this is gonna be like for my kids, right? Uh, but once they, I think this first cohort has the experiences it has, uh, and word of mouth gets out there, we're gonna, we're gonna have a large number, we're probably gonna have weakness pretty quick, uh, in years two and beyond. So quick tour, that's the front office. That's what once was the library, that is a mini conference, training, gathering, public speaker, visitor kind of environment now. These are some of the things on the walls.
All right. You're gonna get a bigger corner next time.
Truth be told, we have a construction update of this facility coming next week and, uh, Mr. Morgan's providing that and, uh, Shannon couldn't get too far and wide in revealing somewhat what's happened there without stealing some of Matt's thunder next week. But we just wanted to give you an update on enrollment, we wanted to give you an update on staffing, and we wanted to give you just a preliminary update on the facilities that we renovated for this first cohort. It's phase one renovation there. And, uh, it's all pretty exciting and they've been connected all spring and all summer with the students and with the other networked schools, uh, doing some pretty engaging, engaging things and having some pretty awesome conversations. Several of the students had internships, paid internships, some of the freshmen, uh, that'll be rising freshmen that'll be at this cohort actually did some work interning with CAS, learning some pretty useful skills and getting paid for it, uh, this summer. So already the internship piece and the marketability and employability piece is already happening for some of the kids and I haven't even started. Equity Steering Committee, uh, one of the pillars in our community-based capability system, uh, the community made very clear that all means all. And so we have been in recent years really engaged and paying attention to the equitability of opportunities and expectations in our system to make sure that when, when we see outcomes that are disproportionate, meaning that some groups seem to be doing better than other groups or some groups seem to be participating more than other groups, what is it about our system and our policies and our procedures and administrative decisions and actions that could be contributing to that? And so we had an Equity Task Force deal of data analysis last year, really comprehensive, and we found some opportunities for some training for our principals that they would turn around the staff. Uh, we did a lot of training around, um, you know, teaching students who come from poverty, um, about, you know, relating to students, uh, who have experienced trauma, um, and things of that nature that created, without awareness and without training, created a disconnect between teachers that are leading, influencing, and supporting students and the places that students are coming from in their lives. And so that disconnect, uh, ultimately ends up in less desirable outcomes for those groups of kids otherwise. And so that was some really meaningful work, but what we realized is that, if you'll click on that link, actually, the equity work is really about something more. It's, it's, that's an important piece of it. Uh, this graphic kinda illustrates something I shared with leadership and the faculty and staff when we returned. You know, we, we've been way beyond, uh, addressing equality. You know, we've all been, you know, really aware about giving everybody equal opportunities. But what we've really been talking about throughout the equity is making sure that every kid has what they need because they all are in a different place. They all have different needs, whether it's academic or whether it's social, emotional, they all have different needs. So how can we make sure that they get whatever boost they need so that we're all on even footing? But the thing about equity work is while, you know, some kids might need a little bit taller ladder than others, if the system is not level, then all doesn't really mean all. So what that equity little slide is showing is that despite our best efforts to give every kid the same opportunities and have the same expectations for kids, if there's denser, uh, the numbers of apples on one side of our system than the other, then some kids still get an advantage that others don't have. And so it's really about system work. So what we're really pushing forward beyond equity is justice, meaning that are there policies, are there procedures, are there administrative practices that we, that we, that we implemented well-intended that ultimately create, create a flawed system that we couldn't get to justice where there were really equal opportunities and equal expectations for all kids? So here, here's one example of many that I've thought of, that I lived firsthand. And it, and it specifically speaks to advanced academics. We, we know that, that access to advanced academics comes before achieving, right? In other words, if you don't give a kid an at-bat, he's never gonna hit a homerun. So every kid's gotta have 100 at-bats before you decide who's a better hitter than another. But if some get 100 and some get five, then you create this inequitable situation where there's no justice being served, right? So in schools, with advanced academics, we know that every kid's gotta get, get exposed to the best quality curriculum and content that we have, or you can never expect a kid to rise to that level of achievement. And so when I was first an assistant principal at the high school, it was the first time I moved out of my classroom where I had my myopic view of what access looked like, uh, as I taught at-risk kids and I taught AP kids in biology. I had no idea how those kids got there, but when I became an assistant principal in 2007, I started going into other classrooms to give feedback to teachers. First time I got to see all the classrooms in East Central High School. And when I got into AP and pre-AP classes, they did not look like the student body. In other words, they were very heavy, middle and upper middle class, very heavy, uh, students like my children who have two parents at home that are involved in their education and very disproportionate in terms of the demographic distribution of our population. So let's say we have 70% Caucasian kids and 20% Hispanic kids, and these numbers are not accurate, and 10% African-American kids. You would expect, within reason, some similar distribution of those demographics in our AP classes. If, if that's not the case, then you either have to accept that white kids are smarter than brown kids and have more cognitive potential, or maybe there's something flawed in the way that those kids get into those classes. Well, we all know that every brain has a capacity to learn as a human being, and if you apply yourself and you persist over time, then you too can be in an AP class, which is why kids with two parents at home that are engaged in learning, whether they're black, brown, poor, tall, short, fast, slow, it doesn't matter, they all end up in advanced academics and thriving, right? Uh, in fact, we've had some student speakers in recent years who came from Mexico whose parents were not citizens of the United States and yet their, their children flourished at the highest level academically in our system. So the, 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 the issue is access. So then I became principal at Heritage in 2008 and I saw the same trends in the classrooms at Heritage, particularly from sixth grade to eighth grade. So I started looking at the population in sixth grade and pre-AP and they looked like the student body. By the time they got to eighth grade, they started to look like the AP class distribution at the high school. So I wanted to know why. Well, the first thing is you had to have a recommendation from your fifth grade teacher to make it into pre-AP in sixth grade. You had to have a recommendation from your sixth grade teachers to make it into pre-AP in seventh grade. You had to have a recommendation, recommendation from your teacher to be considered for, right? So if a teacher believes you're a good student, you get a recommendation. If you believe you're not a good student, and that could mean everything from, because you proved you, you're smart, to you brought an apple every day and did exactly what I said without questioning you. The second thing is we had some arbitrary data internally. We had this screening data way back then that we just decided what the cut score was. We were guilty of doing what the study Texas does with STAR考试. Smart ends right here. So based on the number of students that took that assessment and based on the number of sections of grade E, we would say, uh, this year, the score is here. And if you weren't above that line and you didn't have a teacher recommendation, you couldn't get into pre-AP. And then even if you got into pre-AP, your parents had signed a contract that said, if you miss days, if your grade ever falls below 70, if your parent doesn't come to this number and meet the teachers and, and school events, that you will be furloughed, you will be removed from pre-AP, that men in any of those conditions are not met, and a parent had to sign and agree to that. Now, I signed it as a parent, I got no problem with that, I'm engaged in my kids' education, I'll be there. But some of our kids live with grandma and eight cousins, right? And they may not have somebody that you be. Long story short, that was another criteria. In the end, what would happen is kids would get removed from pre-AP for one or more of those reasons, and along the way, you started to see kids who had greater opportunities in their life showing up, not just the kids who had the capacity for academic achievement. So when I say that, I say that we created disproportionate outcomes by design as a system. So since then, I'm happy to report, fast forward to 2020, when you look at the distribution of participation in our advanced courses, they, they almost mirror our student demographic distribution, poor, small, I mean, poor, ethnicities, at-risk indicators, because we no longer have contracts required, we have performance required, we no longer have cut scores. If you have a desire to take advanced course work, you want it, you get. If you have a desire to take advanced course work, you want it, you get, we don't get to choose for you. And, you know, so as a result, we trued the system. So we inadvertently, without knowing, by trying to do the right thing for kids, based on what we were seeing, we trued up the tree in East Central ICS that relates to accessibility to high levels of quality instruction in the most rigorous academic content. So that kids are ready for whatever they want academically beyond East Central. And it wasn't just a smaller and smaller group over time. So in order to make sure that we have a disciplined process for that happening and for us looking inward regularly, we've created a, in addition to our task force, we've created an equity, we call it the Steering Committee. And they're basically an action research group. So as the task force finds data that indicates, hey, maybe there's something here that we need to look at internally to make sure that our procedures or our policies are not inadvertently creating disproportionate outcomes, do a little research. So this committee is a little diverse committee. It's small. Depending on what they're gonna research, they'll bring other community in, board members in, other staff in the district in to do some action research to see if there's some opportunities like the one I just described that I, I mean, literally I stumbled upon because I was just looking and I had the opportunity from different roles that I played in the leaders league, nothing like to see these things as opportunities. But this committee won't give it the chance. They'll do research. They'll see where the opportunities lie and then they'll come back, make some recommendations after doing that research. They'll demonstrate what they discovered. They'll point to the things that we might have an opportunity to adjust. They'll make some recommendations. If it's a possibility to amend board policy, that would be something we would be bringing to the board and explaining to them why we want the board to potentially consider this. If it's an administrative procedure, we'll bring our principals together and review that and see if we need to make an adjustment to an administrative procedure. Because all those things I've mentioned, the contract and all those sorts of things, and we did that as administrators. We made those decisions. So we can undo those things and make them better. So there may be policy implications. There could be administrative procedure implications. There could be training and development implications for our folks who have some blind spots. So they're making judgment decisions based on biases that they didn't realize they had, we had. And so I just want the board to be aware that that's a, that's a big body of workforce that we think will give us an internal mechanism for always looking inward and making sure that we're not the problem by design. And that we're not creating these disproportionate outcomes unintentionally because the tree is leaning one way or another. So that's what that work is all about. We're in the infantile stages of really doing system work, but we're pretty encouraged by it. We think we're on the right track. When you, when you interact with different organizations that focus on education equity like IDRA and other local and state organizations, this is the kind of stuff they say we should be thinking about. And the fact that we're incorporating a structure in our system to do that work, again, we think we're headed in the right direction for really getting to this outcome where all really does mean all. And at the end of the day, they're, all aren't gonna achieve, right? Because it does require effort and persistence and commitment on their part in the end. But once the opportunity is there, the expectations for them are there, it's up to them now to rise up or not. And once it falls short, they just gotta live with those outcomes. But it's not because we didn't give them access and opportunity, right? So that, we're not saying that it's Pollyanna and every kid's gonna get there, right? Because human beings, in our, in our world, we live in a meritocracy. Ultimately, we advance because of merit. But we wanna make sure that kids don't fall short because of lack of opportunity and expectations. When they all have it, it's up to their merit to get there. And that's what I heard from the community when they said all means all. Not everybody gets a trophy, but everybody gets the opportunity and everybody has the expectation to perform at a very high level. And some are gonna get that trophy and some are gonna fall short, but they've all had the opportunity. Can we expect that they can do it as a system? Demographic study, September 1st, PASA's coming in to do that comprehensive study. And they're gonna take a fast-growth approach to that on Soper Springs Road. If you didn't notice in the last couple of weeks, a lot of contractors up and down Soper Springs Road, they're putting in the sewer infrastructure for the subdivision that is gonna go in on the Gates property that was purchased by Gordon Hartman. So the sewer connections are actually happening. I think Gordon Hartman invested $52 million and that infrastructure is, dirt is fixing to start moving. And since even our last conversation about this topic, we've been made aware of several subdivisions that weren't on the radar after our last demographic study, which is why we hired PASA instead to focus on a first fast-growth approach to this. So the board has good information that they can take advantage when it comes to what's on the horizon in terms of residential development and what the implications could be in our enrollment with specificity in terms of different areas of our community so that we know how it will affect different schools and campuses and grade levels in different areas of our community. So the board can then decide what next, if anything, as it relates to facilities to account for that in the near and long term. Lastly, we know that two years ago, we did a lot of thinking and reflecting around district communication. And our solution was to formalize a communication department so that we could build structures and systems in our organization for communicating in a proactive way, in a comprehensive way, in a meaningful way, that really responds to the needs and requests of citizens and families and students that we serve and staff that we employ. And we stood up a communications department, a marcom department. And we hired Brandon and Yelpa and No Brandon in the last year. And to a lesser degree, Lisa, his assistant. And most recently, we transitioned Sam from Technology where he's doing a lot of communications work as a technician, expediter leader in that department. A lot of the technology-focused work around marketing and communications, which is why Sam's been in our board meetings the last year and a half. So basically, his job description is very similar, but we just figured it's time to house him under marcom where most of his duties resided so that we can then also advance our technological components of communication and marketing as it relates to our websites and videography and all of those sorts of things to integrate with all the other aspects of communication, social media, et cetera. So I wanted Brandon to come and give the board an update of kind of how 2019, 20 went and what we could look for as we advance to the next phase of our marcom department implication, implementation. So Brandon.
Thank you, Mr.
And Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Tiscana. Let's go and play this video.
Good morning, East Central Board Superintendent Tiscana. I'm gonna show that the perceptive investment made into establishing a marketing and communications department more than paid off in its initial year. I'm going to separate our results into three different categories: marketing, communications, and community. I'm going to illustrate how we turned this once text-proofed room into a thriving, efficient, agency-like department. Beginning with marketing, our objective this year was to tell our story at East Central. The goal started with an initial overview of current branding assets that the district has, the communication channels and efforts used to tell that story, and what previous branded messages the district had. Another goal was to rebuild the bridge between East Central and the San Antonio media. Our focal point this year was twofold. One was to complement the vast and critical traditions of the district with modernism. It's a final line. And while it is essential to build on and celebrate tradition, it is equally important to show how those foundations are contemporarily used and what skills our kids will receive and what type of instructions they'll receive as well. The other was to embrace the district's enormous size and all of the stakeholders within it are well-represented. In what sort of ways can children of ethnicities, backgrounds, abilities, and passions see themselves reflected in the output messaging of the district? We began the storytelling with a coordinating campaign of a video shoot and photo shoot by key ideas with those concepts in mind, along with ad materials or paid media placed in the San Antonio Express-News where we could control the content. And also, we did a website makeover. Incorporating a new brand guide created within the first month of our department's existence, we wanted to make sure that our two goals were accurately depicted in a manner where traditionalism meets modernism and where everyone is included. There was a whole, our photography used in publications and digitally showcased our diversity. All means all, including passions and interests that enable a well-rounded student person to be left out. Another marketing goal was to repair the relationship between East Central and the media of San Antonio. A quick Google search for marcom's existence will show some less flattering news covers. The district's been literally in bigger difficulty between East Central and media, meaning it would be short. The goal began with meetings and lunches with various members of the San Antonio media. Establishing faces to names and personalities beyond keyboards. The result is that publications like the Express News and the Revard Report come to us as subject matter experts, whether on the record or off record, to help with information, in particular with the crisis that gripped the world this year. These efforts build trust. And while I can't promise a media story will never be printed based upon an action by the district or an employee, I can guarantee that the bite will be less. The East Central brand is one of the top identifiers for the district. Upon the inception of marcom, logos and marks were all over the place. Marcom narrowed down the color palette, logo, seal, and mascot. The mascot can be altered to reflect different people and interests while still retaining its look, shape, and characteristics. We also ensured that the agreement with Georgia Tech University over the Yellow Jacket was still intact by reaching out to them and reaffirming the agreement. Communications, in particular crisis communications, was a top priority this year. From a global pandemic to silo and rest, marcom was proactive in an environment that is mostly reactive. Our high level of consistent communication with videos, imagery, social posts, parent link, and responding to media was on point. Before we go to the pandemic though, let's take a look at the prior communication efforts. The first communication effort was to analyze the high cost of the district's primary source of communication, the School Bell Times. First, there are no indicators to determine if the School Bell Times was read, how much time the reader spent on it, and how many times the reader shared articles and knowledge from the School Bell Times. According to the 2019-2020 budget, $8,030 was slated for postage and $13,500 was slated mainly for printing the School Bell Times. Instead, we created a key performance indicator, or KPI report, to track our progress with social media and the website. In doing so, we found our audience. According to Spouse Social in 2019, nearly 85% of millennials, 75% of Generation X, and 60% of boomers use Facebook. That's our bearings. Another startling statistic is that district's Facebook showed that there was a 1,249% increase in reactions, which are likes, comments, and shares, for August 2018 compared to August 2018. Twitter also greatly increased. In August 2019, the district Twitter had 75,000 impressions compared to 5,000 impressions the year before. But how did we grow in the first year of marcom? Let's take a look and I hope you hold on to your hats. In the first week of marcom, July 8th through 14th, 2019, Facebook had 4,412 followers and 1,237 engaged users. Twitter had 1,509 followers and 6,650 impressions. Flash forward to the week of August 3rd to 9th, 2020, Facebook has 6,846 followers, a 54% increase, and 2,598 engagements, a 110% increase. For Twitter, 2,201 followers or a 50% increase and 30,000 impressions, a 353% increase. Now, an argument could say, well, in a pandemic, of course, people are gonna be on social media. And it's partially true. For the week of March 2nd through the 8th of 2020, we had an increase of 20% of Facebook followers and a 22% of Twitter followers compared to July 8th through 14th of 2019. While those are bandy statistics, let's take a look at what followers actually did with the content. The engagement of Facebook went up 148% and the impressions on Twitter went up 209%. What this shows is that while we gained more followers during the pandemic, the engagement followers did have prior to the pandemic in year one of marcom was up dramatically. They were taking this information and asking questions, gathering information, and sharing with the community. They were building trust that the district's social media is a place with timely, credible, and accurate information. And the responses from the community on the line on our social media for information tells a story. Now let's look at the costs. We did run ad campaigns on Facebook, mostly centered around sense awareness, prepaid registration, and the East Central wedding ceremony, and sometimes boosted some posts. The total for the year came out to $693.57. Those ad buys reached 38,906 people with 399,69 impressions. That's direct cost. There's indirect costs at some platforms that we use to create graphics and videos for posting. For example, canva.com at $119.40 for the year and wondershare, Delmora, at $40 a year. Still, these indirect costs and programs are also used for other publications and projects, not solely on social media posts. Compare that to the $21,530 slated for the School Bell Times, a publication that is only available periodically with no way to track viewership. Another communication platform that was free and effective was the Tides of Pride newsletter posted to our staff, the community, and our key stakeholders. To arrive from submissions by our staff, the weekly recap showcases outstanding work and recognition for our staff and students. The next issue of Tides of Pride is slated to go out next Friday. With the pandemic, marcom has been the culprit for all things, both internally and externally. Whether it's memos or letters from the superintendent or timely and content-rich communication through social channels and parent link, marcom has been on top of it. Coming back to school, we have been instrumental in communicating what the community needs. Whether it's our standalone ecproad.com website that hosts everything back to school, to host Facebook Lives with the superintendent and principals, these all carry vital information. The Facebook Lives averaged 300 to 400 people viewers, meaning that viewers are watching live at one point, with an estimated reach of 5,000 to 15,000 viewers total. The Facebook Lives have attracted the attention of neighboring school districts, acquiring how are we able to create them? As well as from the media itself, these real-time broadcasts allows Superintendent Tiscana to showcase his expertise and confidence during a very stressful time. And finally, our presence has been felt in the community as a liaison for the East Central School Foundation. Marcom was helpful in attaining the venue, the protocols for the program and the event, audio and visual means, tracking and moving inventory, and so much more with expertise gaining from running other high-end galets. The results were a profit increase of 25% compared to the previous year, with the most contributions raised ever in gala history at $117,627. When graduation had a change due to the pandemic, marcom was there to help the streaming live event, assisting with coordination of the event, and suggesting that a stage be used to help quell negative feedback from the community. The results were 1,700 people. The results were one thousand seven hundred peak viewers on the live broadcast and a ceremony that surpassed expectations. We continue our trainings with the school's web content creators to help with their websites, along with trainings to use Canva.com to produce graphics. We also have block board representatives lead those website trainings. And finally, our small but mighty department, myself, Lisa Staller, Communication Specialist, and recently added the San Delgado Multimedia Video Production Manager, continue to meet as a group daily for ten minutes, was affectionately known as the Daily Huddle. This is so we can prevent things from slipping between the cracks, and knowing what each other is working on, and if there is any way another team member can assist. So that's my wrap-up for 2019, 2020. I want to thank you for this time. We certainly will continue to grow our success and introduce new methods of technology to produce efficient marketing and communications for the district.
It was nice to have Brandon on that far. That far was impressive. Do you have to answer any questions? Have Brandon question if you'd like.
Good job, Brandon.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I would have to say that one of your big goals, that there's been a lot of work going on, and a lot of great results, of being all learning, the increase in that has been just fantastic. So wonderful work all the way around. I'm sure the agricultural community will be interested in how you got the apples to grow on that side. It's straightening that tree up, okay? Myself, I've got a tomato plant that's only producing on one side, so I want to know how that happens. And I'd like to get some bigger tomatoes off of it, okay? Get some equity and pop it. But some of this stuff.
I'm not the only one that sees that in a picture. And that was, because I'm sitting there, never mind, I'm not giving you that. I have some issues with that little, that little.
A lot of good stuff going on, and really, uh, great things to you and your staff and the work that's been done within the district, across the entire district, to get our kids where they need to be during all of these trials and times. I don't know what else to tell you. My technical support, the one I'm giving to the district. Thank you to everybody for all the efforts.
Y'all done a lot of great work, and thank y'all very much. Just Brian said it's amazing job y'all are doing. They keep up the good work. Appreciate everything.
I don't know how you guys do it. To change every day. I mean, everything I hear on TV, I don't know what the hell's going on, and you guys are doing it. And I'm wondering what the hell's going on. Because each changes every day. Everything I see and I hear, it's, there's always something different. Bless you. And so to have it happen Monday, it's surprising. So y'all did a wonderful job. Wonderful. It's truly amazing. So you've earned every penny that you make. And that's all you made. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So, anything else? I have a motion for adjournment. All in favor?
Hi.
Motion here.